I called at order the regular meeting of the Lakewood City Council on December 8, 2025 at 7:00 PM. To connect with the council meeting online, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post comments of any links to LakewoodSpeaks.org. That is our online forum and will be kept open through tonight until 10:00 AM tomorrow. Anyone who would like to address the city will be given the opportunity several times throughout the meeting, whether it's related to an agenda item or general public comment. Will the city clerk please start us by calling the roll?
Strom.
Here.
LeBure.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Cruzgay.
Here.
Black.
Here.
Charzai.
Here.
Sinks.
Here.
Cruzai.
Here.
Lo.
Here.
Furman.
Here.
Nystrom.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And at this time, I would ask if you're able to stand, please do so to join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All members of the city council have the responsibility to comply with terms of Charter 7.2b and excuse themselves from voting on any matter in which they determine they have a personal, financial, or business interest. The city council is empowered by Charter 7.2b to agree by unanimous vote excluding the member at issue to excuse any member of the council from voting on a matter in which they determine such member has a personal, financial, or business interest. Before we move on to our agenda items today, for those of you that have joined us before, you know that if we have proclamation, we tend to do that at the top of the meeting. And tonight, we do have a proclamation honoring Colorado Gives Day. Colorado Gives Day has been alive and well in our community for many years. Just to give you an idea as the impact that it's had, in 2024, that day raised over $77 million, 134,000 individual donors, and owed 4,500 nonprofits benefited from Colorado Gives Day. Tonight, for our proclamation for Colorado Gives Day, we do have one of our nonprofits, local nonprofits, that will be here to accept this evening's award on behalf of Colorado Gives Day, and Counselor Isabel Cruz will be reading that. And if you guys want to come up here, I'll meet you up at the lectern. And do we have, yes, we have the proclamation.
Proclamation for Colorado Gives Day. Whereas charitable giving in the city of Lakewood is essential to providing support that local nonprofit organizations need to make our community a desirable place to live. And whereas Colorado Gives Foundation is dedicated to strengthening communities across Colorado by connecting donors and nonprofits on coloradogives.org through year-round giving and Colorado Gives Day. And whereas Colorado Gives Day has supported thousands of nonprofits for more than 15 years, raising more than 524.6 million. And whereas this year, the need has never been greater for nonprofits, and neither has our chance to easily give to change someone's tomorrow. And whereas Colorado Gives Foundation created Colorado Gives Day to celebrate the impact of coming together and supporting our local communities. And whereas we recognize the more Colorado gives, the more Colorado thrives when people can donate to the nonprofits they care about on what is easily the best day to give. And whereas Colorado Gives Day will be celebrated on Tuesday, December 9, 2025, with early giving that began November 1, 2025. And whereas the people of Lakewood are encouraged to participate in Colorado Gives Day because no matter who you give to or how much you give, the result is the same. We all get to celebrate the magnitude of good we create together. Now, therefore, on behalf of the city council and the people of the city of Lakewood, I, Wendy Strom, Mayor of the city of Lakewood, Colorado, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim December 9, 2025, as Colorado Gives Day.
I am a very nervous public speaker, so you just bear with me for a moment. Good evening, council members, community leaders, and neighbors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Can you hear me while I'm speaking? Okay. My name is Eliana. I'm here with my team, Peter, representing the Hungry Free World, a nonprofit arm of the Hungry app. Our work centers on the simple belief that communities thrive when there's trust, connection, and investment in a local level. We are excited to share infrastructure and opportunities that help us make that possible in collaboration as an extension of support received through Colorado Gives Day. The Hungry Free World leads a movement as community arm of the Hungry app, a tool that makes giving possible every single day. And in the spirit of Colorado Gives Day, we want to remind our community that generosity is not limited to the financial donations. We can give simply by sharing what we already have. The Hungry app allows individuals, families, institutions, and businesses to list surplus food in real time for free. So nearby neighbors who need support can pick it up quickly, safely, and with indignity. If you have extra, you can share. If you have need or support, you can request, and it all happens within your own community. These tools remove barriers, reduce waste, and turn everyday moments into an abundance, into an opportunity of care. Today, we are grateful to share recognition for Colorado Gives Day through the Hungry Free World as a recipient of the Jeffco Colorado Gives Day grant. The support allows us to launch the Jeffco Community Village, a county-wide network that connects households, schools, restaurants, nonprofits, and businesses through safe, real-time sharing of surplus food. While providing a simple sharing tool, we are also able to support students and families from all different backgrounds with the nutrition, education, healthy practices, and access to free meals during weekends and holidays when support is often the hardest to reach. This work is practical, it's community-centered, and it's designed to meet people where they are with dignity at the center. Our goal is clear for 2025, to divert edible food from landfills and redirect to families across Jefferson County. To make this possible, we are seeking community partners such as schools, restaurants, businesses, churches, nonprofits, neighborhood organizations to participate and help carry this work forward. Participation expands access to food, reduces waste, and strengthens community resilience at the moment when it's truly needed. Your partnership with Jefferson County can become, or with the partnership of organizations from Jefferson County, we can become a model for efficient, equitable, community-driven food access. To connect or get involved, please reach out to our team via partnerships at hungryfreeworld.org. We really appreciate your time, your consideration, and this wonderful award for Colorado Gives Day.
Thank you. And for the record, it might be tomorrow, but I'm pretty sure you can donate today for tomorrow. Moving on to our initial public comment for this evening. This is the first point in tonight's meeting where the public is invited to address the city council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. This initial period of public comment allows for up to 10 speakers to provide comment on any matter other than an agenda item and does prioritize those with special needs. Speaking during this initial period of public comment does require signing up to speak with the city clerk in advance of the meeting. There will be no pooling of time during this initial period. The goal of public comment is to create an environment that welcomes all stakeholders to share their thoughts and concerns. Whether your comments are left on LakewoodSpeaks.org or here in chambers, I ask that all comments be directed up here to the city council, that anyone in attendance or online respect the decorum of council chambers and practice civility, and so that every speaker may be heard. I ask that we have no audible support or discourse, like clapping, yelling, whistling, you name it. For anyone who in the audience that may be uncomfortable speaking here in front of the room, you too are also welcome to leave comments on LakewoodSpeaks.org if you'd rather do that instead. That will again remain open tonight and until 10:00 AM tomorrow. Please note that if you are speaking and you have any handouts that you'd like to share with the city council, I'd ask you to provide them to the city clerk over here, and he'll distribute them to us after tonight's meeting. The purpose of tonight, or for the purpose of the time tonight, is for us to hear from you. This is a listen-only session. If you would like to engage in a back-and-forth conversation with your counselors, staff, or myself, I would encourage you to reach out via phone or email, and we'll get you some time scheduled to do so. So with that, our first up to speak this evening is Amanda Phillips. And when you get up to the lectern, I'll ask if you'll please start by stating your name and address, or name and ward, and then we'll get your clock started.
Hi, Lakewood City Council. How is everybody doing tonight? I'm Amanda Phillips of South Denver. Half of transgender people in the U.S. have had interactions with people, excuse me, let me start over. Half of transgender people in the U.S. have had interactions with police in the last year. Of that group, 50% report being harassed, misgendered, or deadnamed by police. One in two black trans women have been incarcerated in their lifetimes. A majority of hate violence homicides are against trans women. You may look over the desk next week and see city attorneys, police, and others who will argue that Lakewood doesn't need aggressive oversight. You may see friends and colleagues. You may want to back down. Jax Grotan was found dead outside of the window of the office she was allegedly in. She was found half-dressed with no possessions. Lakewood Police deadnamed her. They have disrespected her. They have thrown her away, just as the men she was with did. Jax Grotan is a warning sign to every trans person, especially women. You are not safe here. Police do not care for you. The city will stall. Everyone with an ounce of power will throw their hands in the air. Next week, you will discuss oversight. As you know, this is months in the making. Oversight has to be independent. Oversight has to have the ability to get info by subpoenas. Oversight has to have teeth. No person should die the way Jax did. No person should be treated the way Jax has been. Please do not back down. Do not concede. Oversight now for Jax and for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. CJ? Kai Martinez.
Hello, and God be with you. My name is Kai Martinez, and I am from Ward 3. I'm here to demand powerful, independent police oversight. And with that, I often find myself saying many things, but most notably that we are cursed with strange times, but blessed with strange people, friends, lovers, clergy, confidants, and comrades. There is no person that better embodied this than Jax, though I never knew her. She, along with many others who have been killed by this peculiar kind of violence, were a daughter taken from a mother. An older sister taken from a child. I am an older sister. My little sister sits in that audience. A neighbor taken from a community, a comrade taken from people, a lover taken too early, and then even further lied about. And I am afraid, as in many things, that she is not alone. It is because of this, and it is because of this city and its police force, and your inaction, that I have gone from seeing my own murder and mistreatment from a matter of if to when. For this, there must be justice, and for this, there must be accountability. An independent police oversight cannot work without subpoena power. My little sister, who's been called, and you're going to pardon me because I must say the full word, a dyke every single time, or almost every time she's interacted with Denver police. And they cannot do anything about it because they cannot subpoena records. They cannot obtain records. I leave you with this. Life is bad, be strange. Life is strange, be kind. May God have mercy on your soul.
Thank you. Brandy Burns-Carry.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, and welcome, Councilwoman Black. My name is Brandy Carey, and I am a friend of Jax. I'm a founding member of Justice for Jax, and I'm a resident of Aurora. It's been 237 days since Jax went missing on April 15, 229 days since her family and friends realized something wasn't right. 228 days, sorry, 29 was the first one, 228 days since I made a welfare check and Jax's mother, Sherilyn, made an official missing persons report. 219 days since our first vigil, where we lit candles hoping to light her way home to us. 212 days since our first grid search at Sloane's Lake, and 205 days since our last grid search at Pagels Park in the gulfs over there. 184 days since her body was found in a small space between two buildings that can only be accessed by unlocking a door. One of those buildings she was last seen walking into but was never seen walking out of. 181 days since we held a rosary service for her. 155 days since we held a vigil when her remains were being prepared to be returned to her community and family. 147 days since we first walked into the city council's chamber with the remains of our friend masked in a trans flag to ask this council for help. That night, I held her. I cried, and I apologized for not reaching out to her in the past year like I should have. I apologized for not finding her, and that day literally broke me. 130 days since we protested outside of Phil Weiser's office, 114 days since Jax's first heavenly birthday, 104 days since you all voted to move forward with independent committee for oversight. 104 days. 37 days since we held her celebration of life. Her celebration of life was our send-off to her, our time to love, remember, and celebrate her short time on this earth, our time to let go. However, I cannot let go. Her mom cannot let grow. The group of Justice for Jax warriors here with us tonight at home watching around the world cannot let go, not until we see this oversight happen. 104 days has been too long. I will reiterate that we understand we came in while you were all working on a big task of rezoning your city, but waiting until December to attempt to create oversight has been a hit to what should have been Justice for Jax. In 237 days, she was harmed, missing, deadnamed, lied about, speculated about. Her family and advocate have been treated abhorrently. Her community left silence and no sight of charges for those who harmed her. And I will say that loudly again, Jax was harmed. We still fight. We will continue to fight. And I would like to end in a quick poem. Do not stand at my grave and weep. I am not here. I do not sleep. I am a thousand winds that blow. I am a diamond that glints in the snow. I am sunlight on ripened grain. I am a gentle autumn in the rain. When you awaken in the morning, I am a hush, swift, uplifting rush of quiet birds encircled flight. I do not stand at my grave and cry. I am not there. I did not die. I hope every day her presence is with you because it's with us. Please make this stage that you have. You guys have your seats now. Your election is over. You promised us oversight. Show the world you have some balls of steel, because you all have the power to do this. I appreciate you letting me go over, Mayor.
Thank you. Zee Williams, and then Jamie Frederick.
I keep having this, I'm sorry, my name is Zee Williams. I'm a resident of Ward 2. My pronouns, are they in them? I keep having this question of who are we? Who are we? Who are you? Who is Lakewood? Who are we as a community? What do we stand for? What do we believe in? Who is welcome here? Who is safe here? This year has been one of the most difficult years of my life. I was in a hard-fought legislative battle to pass the most aggressive pro-trans legislation after Trump was elected. And in the course of that, my friend went missing. And I had to talk to people about how if you're doing a grid search, that means you're looking for a body. You're looking for keys. You're looking for a phone. You're looking for pieces of a life that once was and is no longer. We knew Jax was gone several weeks in, and we still had to fight for trans people. And when we came out of that fight, we had to fight for her. And so I ask you now, Lakewood, who are we? Who is welcome on our streets? Who is safe on our streets? If you go missing, who will be cared for? Who will be searched for? Who will be named by their name? Who will be loved? Whose mother will be heard? We have been here so many times, and I know you're probably very, very well-versed in our talking points, and I thank you for listening to us over and over. And now, next week, you have your study session, and I ask you to do the harder thing. Don't just listen, act. Do the hardest thing. Make courageous choices. Be brave in your policy. Be ambitious. Do something for my friend, because she cannot live anymore. She cannot walk anymore in this world. But you can honor her in your votes, in the policy you write, in what you pass. So make sure when you're doing this study session, when you pass this independent oversight, it's real. It has teeth. It does something, not just for her, but for every community she cared about, unhoused folks, immigrants, and others. Long live Jax Grotan.
Thank you. Jamie Frederick.
Hello, my name is Jamie Frederick. My pronouns are they, she, and I'm here to speak on the need for independent oversight. It's December, December, and there's still been no answers, no accountability, nothing for Jax's family, friends, and community. I appreciate the declaration you made last meeting honoring Trans Day of Remembrance, but we need action. We need independent oversight. We need independent oversight. I've said this before, but it bears repeating, independent oversight is essential. And for it to be effective, it must have actual power and access to information. It must be truly independent of the police. It cannot be run by people who have harmed our community, who cannot oversee themselves objectively. Without these abilities, it will not be able to provide true accountability. That would further harm a community that is already hurting and under attack. The trans community deserves to feel safe, deserves to feel secure, deserves to feel that you are listening to all of the people who have gotten up to speak in front of you. Because right now, we are hearing silence when we should be seeing action. You have a real chance to make change, to give some small hope to my community in a time where many may need it. You have a chance to make Lakewood a safer place for trans people and for everyone. You have seen how hard my community will fight and we are asking you to fight with us. I know I will keep pushing, keep showing how much this means to my community, to keep showing you that the world is watching. So I urge you again to honor the time everyone here has spent to speak up for justice for Jax. I urge you to prove that accountability and transparency still matters, that it is still your priority, that you give Jax, her family, friends and community the same level of care you would expect if someone, if something happened to someone you loved. Long live Jax.
Thank you. Matt Lewandowski.
I don't know why I brought this. I'm just reading from my phone anyways. Good evening. My name is Matt Lewandowski and I'm here on behalf of the Children's World School, which resides in Ward 5. And I'm a part of the Parents Safety Committee. The Children's World School is a play-based early education center in Lakewood focused on kids aged 12 months to pre-K. The Children's World School has 124 children across six classrooms. The director of the school, Ms. Beth Lamb, made it a goal this past fall to improve the safety and security of the school. This included policy changes, meeting with law enforcement, addressing a number of physical upgrades to the building and empowering parents to take action by forming a Parents Safety Committee. The duties of this committee are daily perimeter checks of the school, fundraising, creating lockdown kits and community outreach. Ms. Beth has worked with law enforcement to identify safety upgrades to the school. Our Parents Safety Committee has also worked to identify specific areas of needs to improve the security of our children at the school. The purpose of me speaking this evening is to address one of those concerns. I'm here to advocate for the acquisition of an R1 walkie-talkie. This is a direct communication line for all public schools, for lockdowns, secure perimeters, et cetera, various threats. Lakewood PD has access to put any school on immediate lockdown through the walkie-talkie. However, Ms. Beth was told that Jeff, was told by Jeffco that we are not allowed to have an R1 walkie-talkie as their property of Jeffco Public Schools. How do private schools and early education centers that are not a part of Jeffco Public Schools receive information about activity in our community? Additionally, how are we expected to receive information from LPD in a timely manner to get our students locked down when needed and keep our community safe during a potential threat? How are we supposed to be aware of potential threats in our neighborhood? We're almost four years to the day removed from a tragic shooting that occurred just a few blocks from here. I'm not here to debate what could have been done differently to prevent that event. However, I am here to advocate for how we can continue to do things to hopefully prevent further tragedies in the future. And the R1 walkie-talkie with direct connection to Lakewood PD allows the Children's World School to hopefully do that by improving the level of communication in our community. If this is denied, the city needs to provide another step of communication between the R1, which is the highest level of communication, and the basic community updates that any citizen can opt into. Private schools and early education centers deserve the same level of protection and communication as the public institutions in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and that is the last one I have signed up for tonight's initial period of public comment. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda into the record? Oh, actually, do we have anyone that wants to pull anything from consent first? No. Please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thanks, Mayor. The consent agenda is comprised of the following items. Item 4A, R2025-67, establishing projects and project funding levels for the 2025 Capital Improvement and Preservation Program, also known as CIPP or SIP, Neighborhood Participation Program. Item 4B, R2025-68, concerning electric vehicle charging systems. Item 4C, R2025-69, adjusting certain fees relating to the building code of the city of Lakewood. Item 5, approving minutes of the city council meetings, regular city council meeting August 11th, 2025, regular city council meeting August 27th, 2025, regular city council meeting November 24th, 2025.
Thank you. And I do not have anyone signed up this evening for public comment on the consent agenda. Would anybody like to speak to a topic that is on this evening's consent agenda? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close public comment. May I please have a motion?
Mayor Schamman, I move for the approval of the city council minutes and for the adoption of resolutions, all of which are introduced into the record by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any council discussion? Mayor Protem.
No discussion. I just want to congratulate the Neighborhood Participation Program winners. I know that that was a competitive process again this year and was excited in the presentation to see some of the great things that are being awarded with some funding this year and the increase to just the quality of life for neighbors around that. So thank you.
Thank you for that. And I will put in a quick plug for thank you to those of you who got together and submitted those grant requests. You know, building a thriving, safe, clean community, fill in every adjective that you want to see within your community and it really takes all of us to do that good work to get us over the finish line. So for everybody that sat down to take the time to write down those grant applications and to be so involved in your community, thank you very much for that. And congratulations to those of you that won. Those are some exciting projects that I very much look forward to following up on. So with that, please go ahead. We'll cast your votes on the tonight's consent agenda. All right, that passes 11 yeses and zero nos. Will the city clerk please read item 7A into the record?
Securing in public hearing on item 7A. Ordinance O2025-36, declaring the intent of the city of Lakewood to acquire interest in property for public purposes for the construction of storm and sanitary sewer facilities from east of Wasworth Boulevard along West Colfax Avenue to Dover Street and authorizing negotiations with property owners, acceptance of conveyance instruments, condemnation of real property interests, subject to further council approval.
Okay, thank you. One comment, two on all of, well, even the tonight's consent agenda and then each of these ordinances that we're voting on tonight, there is a lot of supporting information also on LakewoodSpeaks.org. And actually, I think each one of them, short of the consent agenda tonight, has a video as well. So any backup supporting information that you'd like to know about any of these, you can find documents as well as videos that are on there. And with that, may I please have a motion for 7A?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-36 on second and final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Do we have any discussion? All right, seeing no hands up. Please go ahead and cast your vote. And that passes 11 yeses and zero nos. Will the clerk please read 7B into the record?
Securing in public hearing on item 7B, ordinance O2025-37, prospectively accepting an application to adjust the operational service area of the city of Lakewood's service utility to include and extend sewer services to property within the Bend at Lakewood Metropolitan District Service Area Plan.
Okay, thank you very much. We do have staff here that is available to answer questions. Before we have a motion on the floor, do we have any council questions for this topic? Counselor Furman.
I've actually asked this question at least of some staff, but I wanted to reiterate the question. If this is done, if we make this change, is it set for any future development here? Essentially, this moves this whole area out of Green Mountain Water and into, into Lakewood and consulted?
That's correct.
Okay. And so this is, I mean, essentially, once this is done, this is settled news?
Yes, they still have infrastructure to build. It's a details in the memo, but contingent on them building that at their expense, then they would be in the, included in the district.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing no questions. I have no one signed up to speak on this particular topic. Is there anyone that would like to speak on item 7B? All right, and we have no presentation tonight on this topic, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And can I have a motion, please? Okay, okay.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-37 on second and final reading.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Hands up. I've got Counselor Furman.
Thank you. I think this was expressed back in May and I don't think it was by me, but by someone else, but I'll express it again. I accept the expedient nature and need for this because of the challenges of working with the existing water district, but I will, I just, I don't know that this really does anything other than to state my dismay at this because of the additional cost to what eventually becomes the people in that community through the need to move from one water district to an adjacent one and the additional cost involved in that. And I, you know, I had some conversations that I think were enlightening and valuable, but I, I'm still just very concerned about the, frankly, some of the things that could have been done differently with the, what I believe anyway would be additional costs, let alone, I think, working with a water district that at times uses its ability to control development by obstinately fighting areas that are within its boundaries. I'll admit, this is one of the harder parts for me of something that I frankly am excited to see developed, but this part is not one that I'm terribly happy about.
Counselor Cruz. Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I just wanted to briefly echo and thank Counselor Furman for his comments on that. I remember when we were discussing this topic a couple of months ago, we had potentially hoped at that time that there could be a different resolution that would have been more affordable and less complicated for the people of Lakewood and for the future residents of this development. And I'm disappointed, disappointed in how certain entities such as the water district involved, are involved in, I think, inappropriately timing housing and adding costs to, to housing in a time in which we need further places for people to live. So I appreciate you kind of asking questions about that and just wanted to, to second comments on that.
Counselor Low.
And I will just briefly third that. I mean, to, to just underscore, I mean, let me just say it even more bluntly. I mean, the, the additional cost of the infrastructure that's going to be built that was necessary because of the obstructionism of one water district could have, I mean, that, those dollars could have been directed to additional community amenities, additional parks, right? I mean, I, I think there's a lot of good things we're getting from this development and we'll talk about that in the next agenda items, but I think it's unfortunate that some of those dollars couldn't be invested in other direct benefits to the community. And yeah, I think it's just regrettable.
Counselor Sinks.
I think this is a fourth. However, I'd like to take it a step further. And so as you see us all up here and as we were elected, this is grassroots, but I think even deeper in the grass, even more grassroots is getting involved in your, in the elections for the water board. And so be involved in that and vote for people that are going to have reasonable expectations and are not going to do as our counselor said. So, so do the grassroots and know who the people are that are running, know where they stand and vote for them if they agree with where you stand. So I just wanted to take it one step further. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we do have a motion. Motion's on the floor and a second. Discussion complete. Please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes 10 yeses and one no. Will the clerk please read item C, or 7C into the record?
Securing in public hearing on item 7C, ordinance O2025-38, authorizing a development agreement for the Bend at Lakewood Urban Renewal Area for land located at 11061 West Second Place, Lakewood, Colorado and approving the park and open, open space plan.
Okay, thank you. And for this topic tonight, we do have a presentation in life as well as on LakewoodSpeaks.org. And so with that, I will hand the floor over to Karen Mueller, our city planner, to bring up the presentation and introduce our additional speakers.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Mueller and I'm a principal planner with the Sustainability and Community Development Department here with the city of Lakewood. We had actually put together the sanitary sewer inclusion and the development agreement in one presentation, so I will edit this down just to be the development agreement at this point. With me, I will have Tracy Wieland, Director of Community Resources, come up for a portion of this presentation as well. The applicant is requesting approval of the development agreement that will approve vesting for the subject property, for the existing zoning and the phased major site plan for the project. The development agreement will vest the property for 20 years and include provisions for affordable housing units, parkland and improvements that meet ordinance 2018-4 as well as various public improvements. A little bit about the project. The Bend at Lakewood property is approximately 59 acres in size and its area is congruent with the Bend Metropolitan District boundary. That is shown in red on this slide. The proposal is for a multi-phased mixed-use development. It'll be inclusive of approximately 2,000 residential units and 100,000 square feet of commercial area. The, a minimum of 10% of the residential units will be required to be affordable pursuant to county and city provisions. The owner will also be required to mitigate any environmental impacts associated with the project. The zoning on the property is primarily mixed-use core transit or MCT as shown here in blue. The area again shown in yellow. There's also a portion in the northeast corner that is on planned development with the base zone district of mixed-use general urban. A little bit more about the location of the site. It is in the southeast corner of Union and West Sixth Avenue. And directly to the south is the RTD parking ride. Again, to the west would be Union. And then to the east is the Federal Center. So what is a development agreement? The development agreement is the document that would lock in the existing zoning, allowing the project to be completed as approved regardless of future zoning changes. It will require 10% again of the residential It will require 10% again of the residential units to be affordable, at least 60% AMI. It outlines major public improvement parameters, requires environmental review and mitigation to be completed by the property owner, requires and outlines parkland dedication, school and dedication, and requires the development to meet all applicable laws. Vesting on a property when it's zoned is automatically done for three years, but when somebody would like to request additional time for vesting, then they go through this process and they go through the development agreement. Vested property rights basically means the right to undertake and complete the development of the property in accordance with the terms and conditions of the existing zoning and phased major site plan regardless of future zoning changes. The purpose of the development agreement, a final phased major site plan shall constitute the site-specific development per city standards as well as Colorado state statutes. So what are the relevant circumstances? Generally, these are larger projects that are phased, that have major improvements that are required. So the size of this property, again, is approximately 59 acres. It is a large phased development. There is insufficient infrastructure, and there are economic factors and market conditions that may extend the, the need for additional time to complete this development. A little bit about the public improvements. There will be a public improvement agreement, or what we call a PIA, that will be done with the development project and the phased major site plan. A little bit here in the red is West Fourth Avenue. That'll be dedicated right of way. There'll be some widening there of Fourth Avenue for this development. Route Street is shown in blue. And then also shown in green is a portion of property that'll be dedicated to the city for future widening improvements that may or may not be necessary in the future for Route Street. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Tracy Wieland with Community Resources.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Tracy Wieland, Community Resources Director. This portion of the presentation pertains to the parkland dedication ordinance and how this particular project has met those requirements. This is subject to the 2018 ordinance, which does require City Council approval for any project over 14.99 acres that does not contain full land dedication. This solution required quite a lot of collaboration and innovation and includes a list of creative solutions to meeting that parkland dedication requirement, including land dedication improvement in lieu, park and open space easements, enhancements above and beyond the development requirements, and a fee in lieu. The parkland dedication requirement and calculation is based on 2,149 units at a multifamily population factor of 1.5. That calculates out to 17.73 acres of land dedication or a fee or improvement in lieu of $7.67 million. As you can see in the calculations and figures below on this slide, you'll see the different creative approaches for how this particular project has met the parkland dedication requirements for this project. The specific components of the parkland dedication requirements and how this project was met starts first with 1.91 acres of land dedication, as you can see in the dark green, which is in the upper northeastern component of the project site. That does not currently include any improvements, as we would like to engage the future residents in conversations about what parkland amenities they would like to see in addition to what is already planned. The second component includes 1.45 acres of park and open space easements. This is the northern future phase, which includes an off-leash dog area as well as a northern plaza. The third one is additional parkland and open space easements of .79 acres, and this is just south of Fourth Avenue, right in the middle of the project site. This includes some enhanced connectivity and some additional landscaping and native gardens that will enhance the overall site. Fourth on the list is the CAR 25 easement. This includes approximately 5,000 square feet of indoor enclosed space that is not only exhibition space for CAR 25, but also event space, and this is included in the first phase of development. Finally, we have 1.44 acres of park and open space easement along the southern component of the site, which includes a plaza and connectivity to the light rail station. As a quick reminder, and as mentioned previously, this includes, or is proposed to include a permanent home for CAR 25, as we all know is a 1911 artifact, and it is not only on the National Register of Historic Places, but the Colorado State Register of Historic Properties. The CAR 25 public access easement will provide enhanced opportunities for the community to engage with CAR 25 that they just haven't had previously. With that is the 5,000 square feet of enclosed space in addition to a catenary track system, which includes about a quarter of a mile of out and back track. It includes a glass wall for continuous viewing by the public as well as public parking in the garage and on streets.
Where would you like to go next, Kara?
One moment. Based on the findings effect in order in the ordinance, staff recommends that the City Council approve and enter into the development agreement to vest the development of the property per the existing zoning and provisions outlined in the development agreement. Thank you for your time, and we are available for questions. And the applicant does have a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Strom and council members. Thanks for having us this evening. Congratulations to Councilmember Black on your recent appointment and election. Congratulations to that. My name is Scott Caldwell. I'm the Executive Vice President of Lincoln Property Company in Denver. I'm here on behalf of our ownership group of the Bend. After nearly three years of work on this, since we purchased the land, we're really excited to be here to hopefully gain resolution and have this development agreement approved. We're seeking council approval of this, of this development agreement as outlined by staff, and I just want to say a personal thank you and gratitude to the staff. We've worked really tirelessly, I think, for three years on this. A lot of give and take. Completely appreciate your comments on this water and sanitation district matter. Really unfortunate and never could have seen that coming when we acquired this land three years ago with a service agreement in place. And so I think where we ended up is the next best solution, and we actually have, have a path to creating development here at this important site. So thanks for your patience on that. I'm really proud of, of all the work that we've collectively done and to establish a framework for bringing this, this project to fruition, hopefully. I think we're bringing significant affordable housing to this, to this area of the city, which we think is important. As just was detailed, all these parks and public space amenities such as CAR 25 and dog parks, et cetera. Just really proud of all that work and really the connectivity that we're going to be able to create to this surrounding neighborhood, to this important development, and create some density here at a critical mass that will, that will drive some commercial uses as well. So not to be repetitive, from our last presentation we did months ago, I'll be really brief on just a quick introduction of our company, and I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Ally Meister, to run through some of the detail in this, in this proposal. So again, Lincoln Property Company is a 60-year-old privately-held development company. We're really fully integrated, full-service, based in Dallas, Texas. We're celebrating our 25th year in Denver this year. Have a long sustained history of creating master plan mixed-use developments like this that the community can be proud of. We've got many examples in town locally, and of course, many, many across the country. Today, we're in active developments totaling nearly $20 billion worth of almost 50 million square feet, and that would encompass nearly 8,000 residential units. So this is something that's in our wheelhouse, and hopefully we'll, we'll get the opportunity to build something we're proud of. So thanks.
Mixed-use development is a strength for the company and represents a significant... Okay. So as Scott said, it's almost been three years since we purchased the property in April of 2023, and since then, we've worked with our architects, I think, as outlined. The property is already zoned for the base density that we have there and for all the product types we're proposing. So we went through a process with our consultants and our design team, but I think really what's progressed or happened is we did a lot of collaboration with staff on what were the goals of the community and what were the goals of the city to bring to this project. And so that's what we've put our heads down, and I think what we've done here is prioritized those goals that we heard in list of what, and this list is in order of what is critical. So number one is we have our base zoning, but I think through coordination, we understood and we heard, and we have incorporated affordable housing. So that's an add, so we're, we're reflecting 10% affordable throughout the project. The second goal we heard was sustainability, and so we're committed to all fully electric units. And then the, the next two are tied together, and that's both access to the communities around us and public space as well as RTD connection, so we understand we're on the light rail. Part of the project will include an extension of the platform so you can get on and off easily to bring people in and also for our residents and for mobility. And with that, it was important to immediately, as you come off the station, to have a public space. And so we actually redid our site plan to include plazas on the south and then a unique commercial spine that leads you basically from one, or one open public space at the southern end to the northern space determinates at the north, at the north plaza. We also engage with community groups, and we've listed them out here. Just as a reminder for the group on our approval timeline, so we went to planning commission in January of 2025, and that was for compliance with the comprehensive plan. We did our study session. That was the first time we brought to get, brought to City Council our parkland package as well as the discussion of sewer inclusion and some of the, some of the hurdles we were having with Green Mountain. In April of 2025, we had our Lakewood reinvestment authority, and in May was our last time here at our public hearing, and that was for approval of the urban renewal plan as well as our metro district. And now we are back here tonight. So this is our site plan, which you have seen before. I'll just quickly touch on it, is, the site is bisected by fourth. I think Kara mentioned that we are doing improvements to fourth, including a roundabout, new bike lanes, new sidewalks. And on the southern half, which is our Phase 1, we have roughly 1,000 units, and that's in five-story multifamily product with ground floor retail, and then the northern half is roughly the same. And I'm going to go through these precedent images quickly. This is to illustrate what the open and public space will look like. And so we imagine the south will be more passive space. That could be covered seating and dining. It's, could be walking trails and it's family spaces such as the climbing log shown here. This is an elevation showing five-story product and facing down the retail spine. And then we have precedent images of retail spines in villages that we would like to see come to life here, and so these all have one common thing, and that's more narrow streets with retail on the ground floor, residential above, and you're seeing some seating flowing outside. So that's best casual dining and services. The northern end of our site has a concentration of retail, which is intentional. I think it has better visibility, and then secondary, it allows us to have more residents and households on site before delivering that retail that it will support. So you're seeing more programmed space. And then lastly, there's space for community events, and so farmers markets, summer concert series, et cetera. We are committing to sustainability that we, that we spoke to. That's both wellness for our residents on site, so that's health and wellness initiatives, indoor/outdoor connection, spaces for recreation, and that's also the buildings themselves and their way they're designed. We talked about being fully electrified as far as our units go, but it goes one step further into the way we operate things, building systems, irrigation, waste management, and also just design materials. I'm not going to probably go into detail since I think we hit on this with staff's presentation, but I did want to just point out that there, there are two sets of open space that we're achieving with this project, and one is the zoning requirement, and then the other is parkland, and they're distinctive and they're separate. They do not overlap. And so we are zoned in a transit area, which is higher density, but we're providing generous open space, so we are exceeding all zoning requirements. That's what you see in orange. And that's a combination of resident private courtyard and amenity space as well as just landscape around the property to create a better arrival experience and soften the buildings. And then we have our parkland dedication, so that goes above the zoning, and that's our CAR 25 and over five and a half acres of outdoor space. A couple more images. So this is CAR 25, the trolley coming into a double-volume space on the ground floor. A dog park precedent image, and again, some trolley images. So we'll leave you with that.
Thank you. Okay, we have our presentation. Before we open up public comment, counsel, do we have any questions for staff or guests? Counselor Furman.
And I don't know whether this is the right time to ask a few of these questions, but I guess my first question is for staff. So understanding that these are the master plan developers and that this is likely going to have parcels, if not the whole thing, potentially sold to other, how, can you explain to me how the development agreement flows down to individual parcels? Or is it, how is that maintained as it moves to other developers? I guess, if it makes it easier, my question is more directly that, does the development agreement maintain with Lincoln only? I'm assuming it doesn't because of, obviously, master plan development like this likely end up with parcels being developed by other.
Absolutely. The development agreement covers the property and any subsequent owners.
Sorry. And then is, there's a lot of commitments in this that are, that are not directly covered in the development agreement. I know some of us have asked about those. Are they captured in any way, some of these items, as it pertains to anything that is not clearly? If it's not in the development agreement, is it, where else is it captured?
Depends on the issue. For example, there are other agreements and, and approvals required, so there'll be a site plan that will cover a lot of specifics about what gets built where and setbacks and everything else. There will be a public improvement agreement that will dig, dig into a lot more detail on the actual road and pathway and landscaping improvements. So yeah, there, there are a lot of other documents and approvals that are required as part of this process that will cover different areas of the development.
Okay. And then a couple of quick ones, then let other people ask any questions they have. My understanding, I think I already got confirmation about this, the current metro district, this is set up so that it is, there is no foreownership opportunity allowed into this current metro district, right?
I'm not sure I understood that question.
It's fine. I think, I think I have answered that one already. I'm just trying to make sure I cover all the questions I had. And then is there any, do we have any sense of timing of some of the elements in here? Like the, addressing the northern parcel, which my understanding is where we have still environmental cleanup that needs to be done. Is there anything that determines when that is? Is there anything that determines when that is done?
Not specific. There's an order, so there are certainly triggers for when it could be done, but in terms of when the developer will start work on the north of fourth, that's going to be up to them and the market.
So the trigger is the development of the northern parcel?
Or activity on the northern parcel. Yeah.
Okay. I think that's my questions for the moment. Thanks.
Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. Just while we got Mr. Parker on the mic, one question I wanted to get out. Mr. Parker, very, very roughly, ballpark, not specifics, like about how much deed-restricted affordable housing would you say there's been in Lakewood over the last five years or so?
The last few years have not seen, have seen very little affordable. I would say dozens of units at the most over the past three to five years.
So probably less than like 100 all in over the last five years, it's safe to say, very conservatively?
I would think so.
Okay. So if this project is approved and it comes to fruition, given over 2,100 planned units and 10% commitment of 60% AMI for rental or 100% for sale, we would be getting, very conservatively, more than double the entire amount of deed-restricted affordable units that Lakewood has seen permitted or built over the last five years or so. That's safe to say?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just one other very, very quick one. This feels borderline obvious, but I'll ask it anyway. All the references to sort of fully electrified units, that means specifically, this could be a question for staff or the applicant, whichever is better, that means no gas hookups for any of those units, just to be clear, right?
That is correct.
Great. No further questions at the moment.
Mayor Pratim Shahzai.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to get a little clarity on the 10% commitment. So building off Counselor Furman's question around the, if the parcels or parts of this project are sold off, the development agreement stays with it. What can we expect as the timeline for the affordability? Is that coming throughout the process, or is it coming later? Is the 10% commitment something we'll see really at the start?
So the requirement in the agreement is that 10% of any, at least 10% of any phase would have, so the developer could not come and do three or four market-rate buildings before building an affordable unit. If the first development, the first building would either have to contend 10% of that building or more, they could build for future phases and do all the affordable upfront or some part of the affordable upfront, but they couldn't get ahead of the affordable.
And I'll just jump in to clarify. In conversations with the developer, they are comfortable with that type of a commitment. This version of the development agreement does not reflect that. Initially, there were conversations about having a separate affordable housing agreement, but in recent conversations, they would like to actually include certain provisions for affordable housing in the development agreement. So that is what is anticipated, and that's what the developer has committed to, is building 10% as they build. So it would not be a situation where you have 400 units built and you have no affordable units. It would be 10% in each phase. But that is not reflected in the document that was submitted. That change would be made based on conversations that were had with the developer leading up to this meeting.
And just to build on that, there's some assurances as well that the diversity in housing stock that we'll see in the project in its totality will also be applied to the affordability carve-outs. So the 10% of affordable units will be a variance in types of units and not just studios and one-bedrooms. Is that correct?
I have not specifically had that conversation. I think that would be a question for the developer.
Who happens to be here, so.
I think we heard a couple of these comments, and so we are committed to that, and we have some language. I know that Roger may have provided some language to staff that we're comfortable with, and so whatever is an appropriate time to read that, we are happy to go over it and put it on the screen. Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Sings.
Thank you. I'd like to revisit the environmental remediation. We all heard the answer that there will be triggers as things are built in the north side, more environmental remediation. However, I do remember from months ago in the presentation that a lot of work has already been done, scientists have gone in. And so especially for those that might have missed it the first time or are like me and the memory is a little weaker, could we have just a quick summary, a rundown of some environmental remediation that's already been done? And, yeah, someone is here to do that. Sorry, I didn't ask for this ahead of time, but you're all ready. Thank you.
I'm ready. It's okay. Scott Waldemire with the Vertex Companies. I'm environmental consultant for Lincoln Properties on it. So the property as a whole has obviously undergone a lot of investigation over the last three or four decades between the GSA, consultants for the GSA, and then when Lincoln was looking to acquire the property, we came in and did some supplemental investigation, primarily focused on the southern parcel, again, Phase One of the development, to kind of see if anything that was done in the past, that they missed something, that they didn't, you know, didn't look at certain areas based on the development. And so we went out and did additional investigation out there and kind of confirmed what we knew what was done, that they did remove what they needed to on the southern piece in general. Obviously, what our goal is for the environmental piece of all this is to provide oversight under the direction of the Colorado Department of Public Health and the Environment to make sure that things get done correctly, that there's clean field corridors, and that if we come across something that's not known out there, that we've got a materials handling plan in place to do all that. And that's all through the existing consent decree that's been in place on the project site for, you know, for 10 years or so.
Great.
And as a part of all that, all of that will get in coordination with the city of Lakewood as well.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, because that's a real concern with people, that people might be living there, and it's not safe. And I almost think I asked this question months and months ago, that when all is said and done with the remediation, you would be fine moving in there, moving your children, your grandparents in there. It's completely safe, and you would have no qualms about it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's definitely true. Especially once things get done. And again, it's because it's through the direction of, you know, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, who's acting on behalf of the EPA in this case. All of those things get checks and balances, and before anybody, you know, can move in, essentially, all of those things have to get written off and signed off on by them. So.
Great. Thank you for that reassurance.
Counselor Wright.
Actually, sorry, if I could steal you just a second. Sorry, I was going to try and catch you before you completely sat down. Just to clarify that last question, the remediation has not occurred yet. There's been studies to figure out what kind of remediation may occur when those triggers happen, right?
So on the southern parcel?
On the northern portion was, I mean, I think we've already established in the previous meetings that the southern portion is, for the most part, clean.
Yes.
It's the northern part that's the scary, some of the northern areas, the scary parts.
Yeah, so once we have sort of the development plan in place, and they've got a timeline in terms of when they're going to do that next phase, that's when we'll amend our corrective action plans to the state, and all of those, again, with the city of Lakewood, would get reviewed and approved by the state, and then we can implement those when we get to Phase Two of development, essentially. Right now, under the consent decree, it's basically just being semi-annual monitoring that happens to make sure that the cap that's in place right now is adequate, that it's not deteriorating, that it's all of those things. And if we do see something, then we address it and say, this needs to be filled in. We got to address whatever it might be, erosion from tire tracks or, you know, something like that.
Right. That's helpful. And if we took the worst-case scenario, that, for example, I'm assuming the developer, we don't know from the development agreement because it's silent on this, but we would assume naturally that development would start on the southern side. If we took the worst-case scenario, and this development just doesn't happen on the northern side, there's no trigger, there's no cleanup on the northern side. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And there's nothing in the development agreement itself that we are asked to look at today that would address when, if ever, any cleanup would need to occur, correct?
I don't think so. Not specific, right?
I saw there's an environmental review portion, but not a cleanup.
Yeah, yeah. I think the intention is, and what we heard last time we were here in May, is that while this entire thing is there's oversight by CDPE, we wanted to make sure that also the city felt like they were able to have the authority to ask questions, and even in public areas, take that one step further. And if they want something beyond CDPE standards, we wrote in language that we could do that. Specifically, I think the concern came around parkland areas. As far as is there a timeline in which the north has to be remediated? The answer is no, there is flexibility on timeline. I think that for a large-phase development like this, there probably needs to be flexibility for the market, but we purchased the land. This is not an option, so there's carry costs for us, the developer, and there's incentive to build on it. It's 50% oversight.
Absolutely. But as a previous counselor mentioned, it's certainly conceivable that some or all of this property that we're discussing could be sold to someone who maybe is a developer that's not quite so benevolent and forward-thinking as you. And there's nothing in this particular agreement that says the property has to ever get cleaned up if they never develop that portion, correct?
That's correct. Yeah. It's just truly that someone would have paid for the land, left 50% of their value on the table.
Okay. That's helpful. Thank you. Question for staff on parkland dedication, if I still have time, Mayor. If not, I can turn it over to someone else before I continue on.
Go ahead.
Okay. So on the parkland dedication, help me out, if we were to sign or agree to the development agreement today and it's implemented, does the city automatically get all of the parkland dedication that's referenced, or is it per phase?
It would go per phase.
Per phase.
It is currently contemplated that car 25 would be part of the first phase.
Right. And so we'd have the same issue with the cleanup if, goodness forbid, that the northern portion, someone does choose us not to develop that because they don't want to tackle the cleanup after all, we wouldn't see the dog park, we wouldn't see, frankly, the majority of the parkland dedication, because most of that is in the northern area rather than the southern area, correct?
The 1.91 acres, that is not within that environmental area, the land that is dedicated and deeded to the city, that is outside of that.
Okay. And that is earmarked to be a future connector perhaps to Highway Six or somewhere else? That's right? That's not parkland itself, right?
We would treat that currently as native open space and work with the future residents to determine what is the best use of that space in the future.
Okay. That's helpful to know. Thank you. And then, again, stop me if I... So in the development agreement, it talks about some areas are going to be dedicated as easements. As I understand that, that's so that the owner slash developer will maintain those properties rather than having the city have to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct. The park and open space areas that are under an easement will be maintained by the metropolitan district. The city will maintain the 1.91 acres that is deeded to them. We will have a fairly traditional owner slash tenant relationship on the car 25 facility.
Okay. Thank you. These questions are for legal, if I may. So in the development agreement, it references a number of other documents, public improvement agreement, operations and maintenance agreement. Doesn't use it by name, but it references what presumably would be a sewer agreement, the sewer IGA, an affordable housing agreement. And I understand the affordable housing agreement is going to get rolled into the document that we're asked to vote on tonight. Is that last part correct about the affordable housing piece?
I think that's the expectation, yeah.
And we know, and we're anticipating an amendment from one of our counselors here to address some of those affordability aspects of it. Is there anything that we would typically expect to see in affordable housing contract other than the percentage of AMI, the number of units, and the mix of units? Would there be other provisions that we would expect to see in affordable housing?
Another thing that has been contemplated is an enforcement clause, so if they're not actually compliant with the requirement to maintain 10%, that the city could enforce that clause.
Okay. What's, and in Roman numeral eight K, it says all of these documents that have been referenced are going to be incorporated into this development agreement. Has the sewer IGA agreement been written yet and agreed to?
The sewer IGA was presented...
Oh, that's what we voted on earlier?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. The public improvement agreement, has that been written and agreed to?
That has not.
Has the operations and maintenance agreement been written and agreed to?
It has not.
And the one document that is, I don't believe is referenced, but is certainly the thousand-pound gorilla zooming out, looming out there is the public finance redevelopment agreement. That's a document where we'd expect to see the priority of cleanup, for example, amongst other financial numbers, right?
Yes.
And has that document been written and agreed to?
It is being drafted. It has not been written. It has not been agreed to.
Okay. And in section 8E, it says that this is the entire agreement. We can't go beyond this agreement when we vote upon it. We can't rely upon wonderful promises that have been made. We have to rely upon what's actually written in this document, correct?
Yes.
And if we did try to go beyond, outside that document, the city, well, I won't say whether the city could be sued or not, but section, in both, two provisions, it's kind of unusual, two places, it says that they can get attorney's fees and costs against the prevailing party. So if the developer were to sue and try and make sure that the city didn't go beyond the development agreement that we're looking at today, they could sue and not only recover their damages, but also legal fees and costs, correct? Presumably.
I'm not sure I follow the question.
Well, there's two provisions in this contract that says that the prevailing party can get their attorney fees and costs in addition to damages if there's a breach of contract and the city tries to go beyond what's written in this document, correct?
Yes. I would like to note that it is stated in the ordinance that's being offered to council that you would authorize to execute this agreement, as well as any amendments or any modifications that are necessary to carry out the necessary provisions of this agreement. It is stated in this agreement that subsequent agreements are contemplated, and so those would be incorporated therein. So while there is still, there are still other agreements to be written, we are asking for the ability to execute the agreement, not sign this as it is written currently.
Understand, but we're being asked to agree to this document to include exhibits that have not been written yet, and if we go beyond what the development agreement contemplates, the city opens itself up to a lawsuit in prevailing costs, correct?
I think what we're asking is to authorize this agreement in principle, which has been presented as it is, and authorize the ability to execute the agreement with any necessary amendments or modifications.
That's helpful. Last question, I promise. In the agreement itself, actually, this is a question for you. So you presented that slide about the commercial development, which equaled just shy of 100,000. I know we've been using 100,000, but, you know, 500 square feet, we're not going to quibble over. Is there anything in this agreement that would require you or some other owner slash developer to include 100,000, 95,500 square feet in here? I mean, because all I see is the word desire.
Yeah. No, I think this bundles into maybe what you were getting at your last point. So the way this was envisioned is this is development to vest the rights, but also to bring the zoning with our parkland, with our affordable, so that us, the developer, has confidence in what our requirement is, and then we can go continue designing, right? Because we need commitments in order to proceed and actually continue to spend money and invest in our design and engineering for this. And so some of those things you were bringing up, I think, for example, public improvement agreement, we submitted our plans to the city in June of 2024. That includes the public improvement of fourth. Route is just getting dedicated. It's already improved today. And so those are really the public... just getting dedicated. It's already improved today. And so those are really the public improvements, right? That's our, I think that was the exhibit that we had on the screen, that staff had on the screen. We are in third round of construction document level review. And so now, once we feel like we're not moving things like sidewalks and bike lanes, which and roundabout configuration, we've worked really closely with and changed things, then it will go into a public improvement agreement. But some things need to get to a further design or even a construction document level of design in order to then put together the public improvement agreement. This isn't something that I think we would have today, which is which is your question, maybe?
Actually, actually, it's not. But I have way over exceeded my time. So if there's other questions, I'm happy to yield before I ask.
Yeah, we have a number.
Okay.
Counselor Isabel Cruz and then Counselor Ken Cruz.
Thank you. And as always, thank you to my colleagues for their thorough questions. I think we've had a robust discussion on this so far. I had two questions, one that related to maybe the last kind of line of questioning from Counselor Ryan. I would love to just better understand, and I think maybe the applicant was getting to this little bit in your last statement of sort of why we're being asked to agree to this now before some of these things that some of us and some of our residents have questions about are solidified and move forward. I think that that might just be helpful context for all of us. So whether that's from our staff or from you all, that would be helpful to understand.
Yeah, so I think the purpose of this is, again, we have the zoning, but we're wrapping this into the sense it's 60 acres. It's seven phases. There are seven paths that are there today. These are not all going to come out of the ground at the same time. And when we speak to phase one, even there's four verticals, those are not all going to come out of the ground at the same time. So this is a multi-phase development. And so we need to ensure that we're vesting our development rights for more than the three years that that were shown. And with that, and as part of this process now, we've collaborated and we're adding additional restrictions in order to meet kind of the priorities that you guys have laid out, which were to meet our parkland, to meet our affordability, things of that nature. And so for in order for us to proceed with design and make an investment, a further investment in the site, we have to understand that our that our ball is not moving and know that we have these development rights on site.
Okay, that's helpful. So if I'm hearing you correctly, what I hear you saying is that essentially what this is doing is sort of like solidifying a step in understanding what the requirements are to get to a further place in design, to get to some of the specifics that we're looking for, that are going to be generally spoken to with what we're what we are all agreeing to, but is not possible at this point because of just like the, I don't know, detailed nature of what that would look like in those phases. Is that correct?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And then I think the second question I had was, I appreciate you listing the community engagement you've done. I know we continue to hear from residents just with ideas and with questions about the site plan. So I was just kind of wondering, it sounds like there will be a site plan that will have to happen eventually. There are community engagement requirements with that. I'm just wondering like what community engagement transparency looks like, both with the plan and then with the Metro District to amplify that resident voice moving forward.
Yeah, and I believe the site plan you're going on the path is for each vertical, there will be a site plan because we have to look at setbacks. We have to look at all building elevations. We have to do everything that is required. And thus far, our community outreach has been in the form of in-person meetings or Zoom meetings. And I think we've we actually have, we've done outreach, but we've also gotten people to outreach to us, which has been great, and asked for a voice. And so we'd like to continue that open line of communication.
Thank you. And just to maybe double tap on that, if I'm remembering Mr. Parker correctly, I don't if these qualify as like major site plans, there are some requirements for resident notification and whatnot, or yeah, for Ms. Mueller, maybe. Thank you.
Hi, yes, great question. With the major site plan, it's really just a site plan that goes through an administrative process. So there are no required neighborhood meetings through that process, but through the initial plating process, there are notices that do go out at the beginning and then at the director's decision on those pieces. And at this time, they would be looking at creating and dedicating that right of way through that plating process that we're looking at right now, as well as making those larger pad sites. And then we will see subsequent major site plans that come in for each of those developments that will be reviewed and may even have their own PIA that's passed this larger infrastructure PIA that's pretty standard process for civil and planning staff to review and for the chief or director to make a decision on.
Great, that's helpful. So just to pull out, there is a requirement, at least for notice in those phases.
So in the initial, whenever you do a plat that actually creates either a tract or a lot, there is notification process associated with the plat itself.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and just indicating, I appreciate, yes, your engagement with the with the community residents so far. And I think, you know, with a development that will have such an impact on the neighborhood, would love to continue seeing that. So thank you.
Counselor Ken Cruz.
Thank you. This question is probably more for staff. The vesting period, right? So in the presentation, you mentioned that the average timeline was about three years. But in here, obviously, it's moving to 20 years. Can there just be more context given as to why the three to 20?
The 20 question may be one for the applicant, but I can generally speak to the difference. So whenever you zone a property, it is vested for three years. So if someone comes in with the project and the zoning is in place, it's vested for the three years. But if a project is large, and that's typically when we see requests for vesting, there's multiple phases. So what they want to know is that the ball is not going to continuously change as they're investing money to get everything put in place to complete a much larger phase development. And so the timing that we've seen in the past has ranged from anywhere to 15 to 25 years. So the request for 20 is the vision that the applicant has for getting this initial phased major site plan in completing these large investments, such as the sewer improvements that are being proposed, the water improvements and having to work with consolidated and various entities in order to even get to that first step, which may even be the three-year mark to see some of those completions. And then as you have all of that remediation that would be necessary to really dive into the northern piece and alone just finish the southern piece are those additional years. So it could go much faster, but it's not unreasonable to request 20 years with the amount of circumstances that are in place for this.
Okay, thank you for that. So just for clarity, staff feels comfortable with that 20 years?
We do.
Thank you.
Counselor Furman and then Counselor Lowe.
I think both because of the scale of this and everything else, I think we understand it. It's also a bit of a soft market. So I imagine there isn't, there isn't the same sort of vertical urgency. I imagine the urgency is around your horizontal work. That said, it does seem the development agreement is pretty broad. I think I just wanted to circle back to something Counselor Ryan was saying, which had to do with the some of these guarantees that are in here that are aspirational, but may not be fully laid out within this, including the commercial 100,000 square feet. I realize technically, you're going to end up wanting some commercial in most of these because of the frankly, the zoning as it stands, right? If you don't have a mixed use, the single use, right, would end up with 30% open space requirement for this particular zone. So there's some need for that. But obviously, this commercial piece, and I realize this is more proselytizing and less of a question, but is really what's critical because of the commercial piece is what contributes to the community in the form of sales tax, right? Like that that aspect is critically important. I think you're dealing with a site here that is the, I think, both the connection for the community, but also for your site's success is critically important. So where I'm getting to on this is a question about community connectivity. And I think I mentioned it to you before. I know there is some talk of, you know, making sure to participate in the forthcoming micro mobility that'll happen in the city. I know you've had some communication with community members about connectivity. Have we seen any traction in anything? I know there was some reference to the the cost of certain types of community connectivity, and I realize some of those are exorbitantly expensive. But I think there's, there are some examples of smaller zoned areas that drive connection. My concern with this one is the view, and I, my concern is actually for your development as much as the community in that it is in an island a little bit. It's a great location. It's in an island, though, and it's the same problem that I think will happen every time you're in an island, which is if there aren't both investments and commercial that people want to go to, but also the thing that connects them, community. So is there, do you envision anything additional driving this community connection piece that will help break up that island aspect, especially as you do some of these first phases and you have essentially isolated buildings with sort of isolated commercial?
I appreciate the comment. I think you've, I think you've nailed it. We both want the development itself to be successful, which will require to have retail on site for residents and then also to draw on the community to make those retailers successful and want to be there. So it's a double edged sword. You need traffic going both directions, certainly for the retail. With that, I think on the mobility front and the connection, we would like to commit to some sort of micro mobility, whether that's a bike share or ultimately if scooter share becomes available and not restricted in the community, that would be another option. But at least upfront, I think the bike share opportunity would be the best. We are extending the bike lanes along fourth. And I think in talking to the community, we also realize that probably the connection along second is another route that residents would take when making their way that direction west. So that's language that we started to craft, and I think we're comfortable adding to the agreement.
Okay. I think that's more of what I had to add. Thank you.
Counselor Lowe, then Counselor Nystrom.
Just a couple more quick things. Could the gentleman who spoke to the environmental issue come up? Or this could be a question to staff as well. So just to put a crisp, clarifying point on it, notwithstanding this question about the timing of the remediation on the northern side of fourth, A, as currently constituted, it's completely safe for, you know, pre, without the remediation on the northern plot, for the development to happen on the southern plot and for people to go to that 1.91 acre park. Those areas are, people should feel total comfort that those areas are safe, even without the remediation to the north, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And no development will happen on the northern side under this development agreement unless the remediation first occurs. That's covered in the developer's agreement, right?
Correct, yeah.
And staff is comfortable with that character? That's accurate from staff's perspective? Okay, getting getting head nods, yes?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks very much for your work. Point two, Counselor Ryan had done a lot of work and diligence on this. He did mention the, so he mentioned several things that are not currently incorporated. One of them is the finance agreement. So just to be clear, I mean, the finance agreement, as I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it is going to come back in front of the LRA like probably in like a year or so or something like that. I mean, significantly later in 2026. Is that correct?
It's uncertain precisely when that would come in front of the LRA, but that that would be an agreement that would be authorized by the LRA.
Okay, but so this is the so-called, I think, you mentioned several, several things that are addendums to the agreement. You described this as kind of like the 800 pound gorilla. But the LRA has to approve that before it gets finalized, right?
That's correct.
The LRA on which every member of this body sits plus a couple of our colleagues. So I just, I just want to be clear, like, we are going to have another bite of the apple to approve that?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, could I, on that note, can I ask the applicant then to briefly speak to, I mean, just hypothetically, suppose counsel said, you know what, this is all coming back in front of us. Let's just hold off. Let's wait for all the things to be incorporated later. I mean, my understanding is that has some implications for the broader financing and sort of the the coming together of this entire project. Does the applicant want, maybe want to speak to that? You know, why, why it's not necessarily advisable if this project is to move forward to just hold off on until the the finance agreement is totally eyes dotted, t's crossed, ready to come in front of the LRA?
Yeah, I appreciate that question a lot. You know, we, we purchased this land in April of '23. It was a zone property, and we have a partnership agreement with a land partner. And so we've had certain financial expectations and obligations to that partner to achieve entitlements and begin vertical development. And so our timeline candidly was to be out of the ground and vertical by now. And so we're still working on entitlements. At some point, our land partnership gets stressed to the point where we're out of money and we're out of time. And so that's really problematic. We've been, you know, feels like patient and really working diligently, but but at some point, we need to get on with this since I think tonight is really important for us to get approval for this agreement so that we can continue to spend money to finalize engineering drawings, get our plans together, and try to get something out of the ground. That's our goal. And so we're running out of time.
I really appreciate that. I mean, I think that's a constructive answer. I mean, look, just candidly, because I just want to bring this discussion in the interest of transparency, like, I think a couple of my colleagues have some concerns that in this macro environment, given the softness just generally of the current macro environment for building, there's, there's a wondering about even whether with all the best intentions in the world, from even the best developer in the world, whether we're really going to see projects coming out of the ground in the next year.
We, we'll just be candid and open about this. I will tell you that the valuation of this site has deteriorated significantly since we started because of the time, not because of market conditions, because of the time and expense to get through this process. And so candidly, the only way we're going to see profits out of this, out of this opportunity is to go build vertical. And so the market is, is not in the perfect condition in terms of development. I think Lakewood's one of those areas where housing is needed. We're sitting on the classic TMA site that should transit and ridership increase over time. We feel like this is a really good opportunity to build vertical projects even today. And the type of product that we're building, that we're planning to build is a kind of product that you can actually build and finance today. You know, 15-story type one construction is not financeable today. But this five-story, four-story residential is, especially in this location because of the lack of housing that we've talked about earlier and the affordable component. So we feel like it's marketable. We feel like it's developable. Time is killing us, candidly.
Thank you for that direct and candid answer. I appreciate it. One final, thank you. One final question I'm going to direct to staff, just purely a process question. So specifically to the four staff seated in front. There was some discussion. So as you all know, I've, we have a draft of an amendment that we've pulled together that attempts to respond to a couple of concerns that members of council have raised. My understanding is it's either impossible or at least cumbersome for us to like directly amend the developer agreement from the DAS. And that if we want to make an amendment directly from council, like, the most straightforward way to do that is to amend the ordinance. Is that fair, just from a procedural perspective?
I would agree with that, just in terms of the logistics of the back and forth that needs to happen with an agreement between the attorneys and the parties involved. I don't think it's feasible to do that today. I think instruction in an ordinance with the authority to then carry out that instruction is much more feasible.
Okay. And so just, I, I know you haven't had a whole lot of time with the text of the amendment that I that I sent you. So sorry about that. The applicant has had a chance to review it and is comfortable with the sort of the substantive pieces in the current draft that's been shared. I want to make sure that staff, I mean, other than the fact that it's perhaps slightly wordy, but wordy in order to address several, several different things that we heard from, from other members of council. Does staff have any, you know, major existential concerns with, with the amendment that I circulated earlier today?
I don't. And I would say that it's clear enough that we could, we could then carry out the purpose of those amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Nystrom.
I think this is really a question for you. From a design standpoint, have, I've been to a presentation recently to discuss the importance of inclusion of childcare. And I know you referred to a retail spine and how important that is to get that up and running. But have you considered design which includes childcare? And I guess from a staff perspective, you know, looking at some of the grants that are out there now would be really helpful because if we're going to offer affordable housing, most critically, and as well as to have people that live there have an opportunity to have childcare on site so that, again, we're minimizing the number of vehicle miles traveled on a regular basis. regular basis, and that we can kind of encourage some of that micro mobility. I'm just wondering where, where you are on that.
Thanks for the question. I, I think as we contemplate any uses from a commercial standpoint, really it's sort of market driven and needs driven. I think the way we view this first phase is we view necessity type retail amenities that, that will go along that spine. It could be food and beverage, but it could be childcare, it could be service type retail that would, would service some of the residents. And as we build density and create demand, I think we see larger opportunities for bigger users up on the northern end, potentially entertainment type uses, fitness, things like that. So I think, I think your idea of childcare in a retail environment could be a really good idea.
But you don't think that would take place until a later phase?
No, I think that's early phase, because I think you're going to start to create that early on. And so the first phase, what we call phase, is really for vertical developments, including car 25. I think that's enough to support some of those types of uses.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
So this is for the developers. So we are going to be looking at some language that keeps getting teased up. When it comes to the mix of the development for affordable studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom, could we make, would you guys be comfortable with saying that the affordable will be proportional to the mix of housing that is, housing units that are built in the development?
Like what?
What? Okay. So that's helpful. The other piece that I shared with one of your representatives I'm concerned about is the cleanup aspect. What language can we put in the, this agreement tonight that would give the citizens assurances that whomever undertakes this is eventually going to clean up the, the portion that does need to be cleaned up? And we're not going to have to guess whether that happens because something triggers in 15 or 20 years from now?
Try and answer this, but I, the way I interpret this is that, um, there's an obligation and, and a requirement to mitigate, remediate the northern portion before you can go build on it. The state won't let you touch that site until you, until you, if you've touched the cap, you've got to go remediate. And so no matter whether it's us or somebody else, I think it's a requirement. Like, I don't see any way around it.
But only if that portion of the property is developed?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, a developer could take the money from the TIF, could take the money from, that's being collected from the metro district and just choose not to do the, to develop that portion of, right?
Yeah, there are more improvements, the cost of the improvements exceeds, far exceeds the amount of the TIF that you're going to get anyway. And so, um, you know, you're going to, you're going to utilize that, those TIF dollars for eligible expenses early on, if you can, and you're going to spend all that long before you get to the north anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. And then question for staff, thank you, that was helpful. There was a reference to making amendments to an ordinance rather than to try and make develop, changes to the development agreement. What ordinance are we talking about?
That would be the ordinance that, that we're discussing right now, giving, giving the authority to execute the, the agreement.
I see.
The, the amendment would be to the language of the ordinance to, to clarify certain conditions that, that council wants to see in the development agreement.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. And seeing no more questions, we will go ahead and open our public hearing on this amendment. And I have first up Joshua Comden and then Rebecca Stewart.
Hello, my name is Joshua Comden, and I live in Ward 1, and I specifically live in the Union Square neighborhood for about six years. A lot of times people will think about, you know, the character of our neighborhood and, you know, large developments not fitting in, but I don't believe that at all. I believe that this large development does fit in. We are a very dense neighborhood and, you know, the development is more dense, is much more, I don't know if it's even that much more dense, but it is more dense, and I welcome it. I think it does fit within the character of our neighborhood, especially with the added affordable housing and these community spaces for gathering. I know it's not necessarily part of the development agreement at the moment, from what I understand, but I know they're, they're very interested, the developer is very interested in working with RTD and the city of Lakewood in trying to build the connectivity, the micro mobility, bike and pedestrian accents to it. And I think it, it helps our neighborhood get down to these nice gathering places, these community spots. And I think it also allows residents from our current community to go down and, you know, spend money in the commercial district, because I, I think that would be a very good sell for them to get tenants into their commercial spaces, unlike what you're seeing at Oak Street And, and I, and I really appreciate the developer being open to these different things, because, yeah, like, like what was mentioned by, I forget who, about like, that the, it's kind of like an island, and unless we get this connection between them, then it's just kind of like a separated, like, micro neighborhood. But I, I definitely like the fact that if we're able to add in this micro mobility, we'll have easier access to their community spaces and the W line. And I think it actually helps the residents of their area, because they get to be connected to our newly developed Wright Park by then and Union Square Park. So I think, I think, you know, it'll be a best of both worlds there. So, thank you.
My name's Rebecca Stewart. I'm a resident of Ward 3, and I want to be very clear that I'm here in my individual capacity. As we consider this ordinance in front of you tonight, let's just remember and keep front and center our community priorities. We are prioritizing and care about transit oriented development. I don't think there can be any argument that that is exactly what this is and meets the community need for that. We want to make sure that we are creating spaces where people do have the option to not use a car and to protect our clean air as much as we possibly can. And I firmly believe that this development does this. Our community has a priority of parks, of open space, of placemaking. We've already heard about the Parkland dedication, but the fact that there is a concession here to create a permanent home for car 25 is going to create public art spaces and placemaking that this area of the city does not have, and it's critically important. And of course, we all care very deeply about housing affordability, housing affordability across the spectrum, right? Housing that any hardworking person here in Colorado in Lakewood can afford. This project is critical in moving that goal forward. For the first time in several years, rents in Colorado have actually gone down, and that is not a coincidence. That is because there were a lot of intentional projects that have been in the pipeline for years, 10, 15 years back in the past before any of us were elected, that are now coming to market, and they're driving the cost of housing and rent down in the Denver metro area for the first time in many, many years. However, because of inflation and the cost of materials, we are not seeing projects go into the pipeline that is going to keep up with that demand in the future, and rents are going to go back up. This is 2,000 units. This is over 200 units of affordable housing that we need to move forward, and we need to get in the pipeline to serve our community. It's, it is critical, I cannot over emphasize this. We are staring down the barrel of rents going back up because no one is putting projects in the pipeline because of the way that the market is right now, and we have a developer who is willing to come in, build something that is going to benefit our community in many, many ways, and continue to try and attempt to keep up with the housing demand, and we need to move this project forward. I am so, so appreciative of some of the amendments that are going to come forward. I would urge support of that. The work that you've all done is incredible, but at the end of the day, I would strongly urge a yes vote to move this project forward and keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Neil Priester and then Chantel Dela Cruz.
Neil Priester, Ward 1, Mayor, City Council, thanks for your time here tonight. Clean Energy Lakewood was invited, was asked to come onboard this project through the Neighborhood Association at, at Union Square to bring forward some sustainability concerns. We really appreciate the developers stepping out on this and in developing a, an area that needs it badly. The, the city deserves it, the area deserves it. We generally, Clean Energy Lakewood generally supports sustainable development, and to that extent, we will have sustainability concerns with the way this is, is projected. The first of those is going to be that there is a lack of electrification in the commercial spaces. We recognize that that's a harder target to hit, but those employees and customers in those spaces deserve the same air quality that the residents are going to enjoy. And if they had consulted, if you will consult the comprehensive plan, you will see that the emission standards that they're going to come, come out of that development will exceed the comprehensive plan's goals. We have to respect that going forward. So, the other second point I want to, want to talk about, and, and there's a lot more to that, this is actually a, a development comprehensive study of a ground source heat pump unit in New York City that houses 1,000 people that was just, this is now under construction. That technology is there, it's scalable, it can be brought up to scale to, to fit the commercial spaces in, in this development, and it covers commercial and residential uses. But the second point was regarding the proposal that all future development plans be based on today's zoning ordinance. I see this is a problem. So I think that, I mean, it's safe to say that even now, the, the energy standards in Lakewood are being, and efficiency standards are being looked at. These standards are going to evolve, and for them to ask that to cover a 20 year development plan when the standards are changing is a big ask. I recognize that they are asking for certainty in, in their profits, but I would also ask, we are in a, a time right now where there's a variability in whether the earth's ability to sustain life as we know it is fixed. They're asking for a static zoning, zoning ordinance when the conditions around us are not static. I don't know the answer to this, and we're talking about some pretty big issues, but you have to build some kind of, of flexibility into that, that adoption of those zoning ordinances and how it will apply to this development, or we're not going to be able to hit those emission standards. They're going out 20 years in their planning, and that's 2045, we're supposed to be zero emissions by 2050. I don't, I see a disconnect in those. I would love to be a voice on those community hearings. Clean Energy Lakewood, I believe, has some standing in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Chantel Dela Cruz.
Hi, my name is Chantel, and I lead the Union Square Neighborhood Association. I represent the neighbors who live, work, and play in Union Square and who will soon be neighbors to the Bend Development. I want to start with community partnership and transparency, because honestly, there's been a gap so far. We haven't felt fully included in the conversation, and that needs to change, but I believe it can change with real assurances moving forward. The Bend isn't just another development, it's an opportunity to set a new standard for how Lakewood grows and engages with its residents, how we make decisions together, and how we build trust from day one. This can't just be talk. Residents need real formal ways to be involved. That could mean checkpoints for neighborhood input before major milestones or agreements that require the city and the developer to share updates on budgets and progress. And understanding why this matters requires looking at the past. Lakewood had a long history of discriminatory housing and development practices, and those policies left real scars. 18 subdivisions and 928 parcels carried out these practices until 1969, and even after the Fair Housing Act, other forms of discrimination followed. That history matters because it still shapes our neighborhoods today, and without real community involvement, these part, patterns risk continuing. Unfortunately, some of these patterns do persist. Our own water utility, Green Mountain Water Sanitation District, has a record of contesting or withdrawing service agreements, as they did for the Bend Development and for Big Sky Metro District, and recently challenged a zoning rewrite on infrastructure capacity grounds. These actions have the effect of limiting where new housing can be built, furthermore restricting opportunity and creating division within our community. But here's the opportunity in front of us. We can choose to do things differently. The Bend can be an example of what Lakewood should be, fair, forward thinking, and committed to the people who make the city move. Water infrastructure is a key part of that. The city must step in, expand water infrastructure westward, and ensure fair access for all. That's what equity looks like. Sustainability is another area where the Bend can and should set precedent. Residents will function within their own ecosystem, and district wide solar can lay foundations for the future. We also need meaningful enhanced development menu that values community input. Community voices should be one of the highest weighted factors, because sustainability isn't just about technology, it's about people. We also need to think beyond the Bend itself. The city must plan for pedestrian and bike safety. And speaking of bikes, as the Bend comes in, bike share programs need to be allowed and accessible. Right now, city laws don't permit that. The Bend can be more than just a development, it can be a turning point for Lakewood, a chance to prove that affordability, transparency, and real community partnership are core parts of the process. This is the moment to set a new standard for the city, one that reflects our values and the generations who will inherit the decisions we make today. Justice for Jax. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's the last person I have signed up up here to speak on this. Do we have anybody else that would like to speak on this topic before we move forward? Mr. Paul.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, sorry. Few off, I just was rushing to get here in time. Adam Paul, Ward 4, council, staff, applicant, want to just thank you all for your hard work on this. This is something that has seen a lot of iterations through a lot of different city councils, and a lot of really incredible opportunities have come and gone. And I just want council to be very cautious tonight, as we all know that we're faced with affordability issues. That's very important. But we're also faced with an opportunity to have the last largest single piece of land in the city of Lakewood to be a very meaningful development, something that's going to last generations, something that's going to provide parkland for those people that are going to live there in a meaningful way. When we look back at the time that we spent and all the thoughtfulness that went into Belmar, one of the largest experiences or things that we hear about comes back to us that there's not enough parkland. And I worry about where we're at with this piece. I've talked to the applicant from the first days when I was involved, and we talked about Bellevue Station, right? You're right next to a community corridor of businesses, of a hospital, and not only does affordability mean something for folks that want to rent, but it's meaningful for people that want to buy. And I just really want to implore on all of you, the opportunity to have great vision and more partnership with the developer to look at these opportunities, to ensure that there are opportunities for ownership, for parkland, meaningful commercial space, and things that really complement what is throughout that area. So I know it's certainly not an easy decision for you all tonight, I appreciate everything that you do, appreciate all the work the developer has done and the conversations that we've had, but this is 59 acres that has taken a long time, and we want to make sure that we get this right, because once we set sail here, this is our only opportunity, and it's here before you know. So good luck with that, and hope that you all enjoy the rest of your evening, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Mary Ann Keer, Ward 2. My concern is, you guys have been talking about the mitigation, and I'm not even aware of what is in that area on the north. And so, what, nobody has really talked about that. So, I don't know. Do we know what's there that is dangerous, or will get airborne? What's, that's just my concern. So, nobody knows?
This is not a back and forth. We're here to listen to you. I'm sorry. You could certainly email in, and you can get a response.
That's my concern. So...
If you would like an answer, then if you'll email us in, or maybe Mr. Goldstein, if you could get our contact information, we can get an answer for it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we have no additional speakers, so with that, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion, please.
Mayor, I move for the adoption of ordinance O-2025-38 on second and final reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Council, any debate and/or amendments now would be the time to bring them forward. Counselor Lowe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure we can discuss it further. I do have an amendment to bring. It's a little bit lengthy, so I'm going to ask our hard-working clerk to bring it up, which, oh, great. Thank you, Mr. Robb. Before I get into the, and I passed out paper copies, I didn't make quite enough for everyone. I'm sorry, so if everyone, if maybe people can share, it's also in your inbox from a couple of hours ago. I'll just go ahead and read it, and then I can talk about it for a second. This is a little bit lengthy, but an attempt in the ordinance to capture a number of sort of different questions or concerns that I've heard raised, that people would like to see specifically called out, or sort of either safeguarded, or double safeguarded, or belt-and-suspended in the developer agreement. So, in the existing ordinance, which is Counselor Ryan already referenced, is the ordinance that authorizes the city manager to, or her designated, continue finalizing the developer agreement. After the current section 2, it would insert all of the bolded language below that. "The city manager or designee shall ensure that prior to its execution, the development agreement includes the following provisions. A. Clarification that the required affordable housing covenant with the city will state that the 10% affordable housing unit commitment must be met or exceeded at each phase of the development, semicolon, that it shall not be disproportionately applied to units with fewer bedrooms within any given phase of the development, semicolon, and that no unit may qualify as an affordable unit unless it includes a deed restriction of at minimum 30 years on that unit, and further costs a household less than 30% of its monthly income, colon, subpart Roman numeral little number 1, for rental housing, a household at or below 60% area median income, AMI, comma, or subpart 2, for sale housing, a household at or below 100% area median income, AMI. B. Provisions clarifying that the applicant shall, as the property is developed, ensure that all dedications and improvements that satisfy the parkland dedication requirement are connected and accessible to pedestrians and cyclists, using recognized best practices to ensure reduced vehicular speed and maximum safety for pedestrians and cyclists at road and transit crossings, and adding shared bike locations that will provide greater connectivity for residents, visitors, and business patrons in the area. And finally, C. A provision ensuring that in the event the applicant subsequently sells the property or a portion of the property to another party, either the developer agreement shall continue to remain in effect, or if the developer agreement is changed, those changes must be approved by city council." So that's the amendment. I now move.
Second.
I would just, to, one clarification point and one general comment. The language specifically on the 30%, 60%, 100%, all of that is just a sort of a belt-and-suspenders clarification that what we're talking about is housing that qualifies for Prop 123, right? That language is copy-pasted directly from DOLA. It's housing that qualifies for Prop 23. So, under the state Prop 123 standard, if it's a rental unit, it's got to be affordable, so not cost-burdening, so not more than 30% of income for a household in that unit that's at 60% of area median income. If it's for sale, it's got to be that for a household at 100% area median income, so that, there was some question, or some confusion about exactly what the language around 60% AMI meant in the developer agreement, so the idea was just to like, leave absolutely no question about what we're talking about. You know, the final, just very general point I would make about this development, there's, I think, more I could say, but, you know, look, over the last five years, Lakewood has averaged 530 new permits approved for new units, which is well below, you know, what has been needed historically to fill, you know, our sort of structural housing deficit, or Lakewood's share of the Denver region's structural housing deficit. I mean, this is, as some of the folks who made public comment have referenced, I mean, this is 2,100 transit-oriented development units. I mean, there are frankly some things around the edges I would change in a perfect world for this development, but like, we're getting 5.6 acres of open space, a whole ton of improvements, a solution for CAR 25, 21 transit-oriented developed units that are really designed, you know, right next to the park and ride for walkability. And, as so many folks know, I mean, the council's been working on a possible inclusionary zoning ordinance that would require, you know, maybe modeled on Littleton, that would require 5% of new units be set aside deed-restricted, affordable, right? If you do the math, to get the over 200 deed-restricted, affordable units we're getting out of this project, you would have had to have a Littleton-style IZ in effect in Lakewood for eight years to get that amount of affordability, right? Because with a 5% set aside, that's just over 25 affordable units a year. You would have to have had an IZ for eight years throughout the entire city to get the number of affordable units that we're getting from this project. So, I mean, there's a number of reasons that I'm for this, but that is the most important one. I mean, this is, the action, if moving this forward is the single most important thing we're going to do in a lot of ways this year, to actually get deed-restricted, below-market affordable units, which we know from the survey that we reviewed so recently, is one of the top concerns in Lakewood. So, I think it is worth doing. I think the amendment hopefully speaks to some concerns I've heard raised, and I hope members of council will vote for it.
Counselor Black.
I just had a quick question for staff, and I think this was already asked, but I just wanted to clarify that, does staff feel that any of these amendments would be incredibly prohibitive to this project? I love the spirit of these amendments. I think they're so great. I see in particular is open. What does it mean to be connected and accessible to pedestrians and cyclists? So, I just wanted to get some staff clarification on if these feel attainable, and if not, why?
Absolutely. Yeah, we don't have any concerns with these. I mean, yeah, the connectivity one is certainly very open for interpretation on what means connectivity, but we don't see any challenges in meeting these.
Counselor Ryan.
Counselor Loeb, perhaps you can enlighten me. What does the language mean where it says after the semicolon in A, that it shall not be disproportionately applied to units with fewer bedrooms within any given phase of the development? I understand, within any given phase, it's that earlier language shall not be disproportionate?
Yeah, the intent was to raise a thoughtful concern that I heard from, well, from Counselor Furman, I hope he doesn't mind me saying that, that the 10% affordable units might be disproportionately applied to like, studios. And, you know, we're getting promised, you know, the 10% of the units should be affordable, and we want it to truly represent like, the actual mix of units, so I think would be amiss, and I agreed with the concern, if we got, if this whole thing was built and, you know, disproportionately the 200 units were like, studio and one-bedroom units, and not any applied to two-bedroom or three-bedroom. And so that clause is designed to guard against that.
In response to a question to the developer, the developer sounded like they were receptive to the idea of having a proportionality of housing mix. I wonder if rather than saying shall not be disproportionate, if you'd be open to saying that shall be proportional to the mix of housing types?
Um...
Does that change the spirit of what you're...
Probably. I, in drafting this at the time, I was frankly hoping to avoid the sort of the wordsmithing from the dais phenomenon, but I mean, I mean, the idea specifically was to call out, what I like about this, and what the applicant has said they're comfortable with, so I think it's actually a win, is we want to be very specific that like, they can't apply it just to units with fewer bedrooms. So, I'd like to kind of keep that. The idea is, it's got to be proportional across different, so my thought was, that it shall not be disproportionately applied to units with fewer bedrooms with any given phase, ensures the core thing we're worried about, which is that it not be applied just to studios and one-bedrooms.
Yeah, and I just, actually, I just don't know how to apply, shall not be disproportionate to units with fewer bedrooms, right? So, how would that work with a studio versus a one-bedroom, for example? How would that work with this one-bedroom versus a three-bedroom? Shall not be disproportionate then with fewer. So, that's why I was trying to think of putting it in the affirmative, of that it shall be proportional to the mix of housing types, or to the mix of bedroom units, however we want to do that. Rather than saying, in the negative, make it the affirmative, and I don't know what disproportionate is.
This is with the utmost respect for the amount of work you put into this, truly, but if I make this change, are you going to vote for the underlying ordinance, or are you not sure yet? It's, either way is totally fine.
Well, I will say that I'm more likely to vote for the amendment, because then I think it's clear, because I think it's infinitely not clear what shall not be disproportionately applied to units with fewer bedrooms. I feel like I could put my kid through college trying to go back and forth on what that language means.
In deference, if you would strongly prefer that, I would accept that as a friendly amendment. I...
If I'm the only one who feels that way, I'd love to hear from other counselors beforehand, though.
I'm hoping to win your vote for the underlying ordinance, so I'm willing to make that change in a spirit of hope.
I haven't made the motion, because I would like to hear from others on the dais.
I too find that the affirmative would be clearer.
Okay. Would that then, may I make a motion to amend the amendment to strike not be disproportionately applied to units with fewer bedrooms, and replace it with proportional to the mix of housing types?
So, a point of clarification, so that clause reads, that it shall be proportionally a...
Shall be proportional to the mix of housing types within any given phase of the development.
Should be proportional to the mix of housing types within any given phase of the development.
And I'm not wedded to any, if you think there's a better way to put that in the affirmative, I'm happy to listen to that. So, before anyone makes a second...
No, it's fewer words, and it's more direct, so you persuaded me, now that I see it written out.
Okay. I hope to receive a second then.
Second. You're done. Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. I don't feel any type of way about either of these phrasings, frankly, but would just love to understand with the wording of like, proportionality to any given phase, with the implication that, you know, there is greater ability to maybe deliver more units, and the affordability earlier, that then might like, kind of balance out to that 10%. Like, what if the earlier phases have fewer bedrooms, and then the later phases have more bedrooms, and then it ends up that the whole shebang is not proportional to the broader amount of units? I guess I'm just like, a little bit nervous with how we're phrasing this, about just like, the implications for the availability of some of those larger units across the whole process.
I think something that would be good for the counsel to give mine is, right now, you are coming up with a phrasing for the ordinance that instructs these people what to put in the development agreement. This will not be the language that's in the development agreement. So I think we all up here understand the spirit of what you're trying to accomplish, and the lawyers will get it right in the development agreement.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you, lawyers. Counselor Furman.
No, that addressed my concern anyway, so, thank you, Travis.
Okay, I have no more hands up. We do have a motion on the floor and a second. Are we ready to vote?
But, point of, this is on the primary amendment?
This is on the amendment, yes.
Because we've incorporated Counselor Ryan's amendment as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great. Great.
So, we're voting on the amendments, and yet, what we heard is, this wording won't be in the agreement, right? Is that what I'm understanding correctly?
I think the point is that we would not necessarily use this specific language in the agreement, but this language would instruct how we revise the agreement.
Mayor, may I very briefly respond to that?
Yes.
Counselor, I mean, this is the most direct, strongest, most affirmative way I can figure out for us to, tonight, if we want to move this forward, which I think we should, to sort of put language into the ordinance that has the force and effect of law, directing staff as clearly as possible what we want in there. So, this is stronger than, you know, frankly, I would be comfortable with our staff saying, yeah, we'll add all this to the agreement, but this is significantly stronger in that we're literally putting it in the ordinance.
Okay, we talked that out. Are we ready to vote? I have no other hands up. Okay. So, a vote yes would be in support of this amendment that includes the friendly amendment that was accepted by the author of the original amendment, and so that would be a vote yes or no would obviously be against it. So, please go ahead and cast your votes. It passes 11 yeses and zero noes.
Yes, thank you. I don't believe there's other amendments that we're going to see come forward, so I just wanted to speak quickly. Appreciation, we do have one more. Then I would like to hold till, on the other side of that, if I could, Mayor?
Okay. Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you, and thank you to Counselor Lowe for your diligent work on the broader amendment. I just, listening to kind of some of the back and forth with the applicant, with our staff, and then some of our public commenters, wanted to just incorporate something to speak to the joint commitment to continued publicing, or engagement with the community. So, I would like to amend section 2, and this is in everybody's email, in case you want to look at it. Amend section 2 to add subsection D, provision ensuring that the applicant will continue to engage with the registered neighborhood organization and community members before major project milestones across all phases, including transparency about design plans, and having community feedback incorporated into plans to the greatest extent feasible.
Second.
Counselor Furman, did you have a comment about this, or was it separate?
My separate comment may be able to tie into this, because the thing I was struggling with is a way to address a couple of the concerns that are not captured in the development agreement, whether it is the elements discussed about electrification, or elements around what commitments we have to the commercial property element. I don't know if there is a mechanism to capture that within the, and then the last one was obviously the community connectivity, that we've talked about, micromobility, or circulator, or whatever that becomes. I'm trying to figure out how to get that done, given that we are sort of up against it in this moment, so I don't know whether or not it can tie into the community engagement or not. So, that's where my, sorry, wasn't prepared with an amendment for this, but that may be captured by that. Throwing that out there is a concern.
How about, what if we went ahead and moved forward with Counselor Cruz's section D, and then you want to draft an E?
I will try to quickly do that.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Staff hasn't seen a copy of that proposed amendment. Could somebody forward that to us, because we don't know what you're working from? Could somebody forward that to us because we don't know what you're working from?
Counselor Sinks.
I'm assuming on this amendment that the same thing is true, that the wording that we see here is not going to be the wording that will be put in, but it will be, it will have the legal ease added to it and, but the spirit of it is, yes, going to be incorporated, that we certainly need neighborhood feedback, correct?
Yes, and I would say it's not a given that we would not use this language.
Okay.
It's just not a guarantee that this is the exact language that would be used.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more hands up, let's please cast a vote. That passes 11 yeses and zero nos. Counselor Furman, did you want to make an addition?
I did, however, I will admit to having not drafted. Given that the elements being edited for the ordinance here are intended to modify the development agreement, I'm trying to come up with something that will address there are two concerns that are things that sound like they are commitments, but they're not in the development agreement. There is the electrification of the units and then secondarily there is, and this is the one that I understand there is, well, there's actually three here, the community connection piece, whether it's a commitment to partnership around, whether it's a circulator or market mobility, I don't know how to get this into the ordinance in a way where we can find this in the development agreement, but I think it's critical that it is more than a wish list.
Would that second one possibly fall under the newly amended section 2C in the final sentence? Counselor Loz.
You mean B, the connection?
My formatting is off, so it might be B or C. Whatever, it's the paragraph that starts with provisions clarifying that the applicant shall, as the property is developed, and then the final sentence adding shared bike locations will provide greater connectivity for residents, visitors, and business patrons.
I think the same one it can be, I think that it's a hard one to pin down at the moment, so. Potentially, yes, although I don't think that addresses the potential for circulator costs, which I know is a hard one to get to, but as I mentioned before about the cost, I...
Mayor Pertham Sharzai.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate this coming up, and I know that we've heard from the community about connection, and I do think that there has been a commitment from the developer in entertaining this conversation more and understanding what that could look like. My concern with being too prescriptive in section B here with, like, sort of explicitly talking about partnership is just the uncertainty around transportation funding and that feeling like, sort of put, I want this, of course, to be the best project that it can be, but at this later hour to have that be a requirement when that's not something that we had discussed previously, I'm a little concerned. That paired with an RTD budget process that just showed $200 million deficit, they're going to need to be a part of this conversation. So for us to be prescriptive here about a connector, is there a willingness for us to have some language that I believe is in the development agreement, but maybe needs to be more explicit in the ordinance around a willingness to continue to explore that and whatever that shared investment could be?
That would be exactly, I think that would be great, but what that exactly looks like, but you're saying we already have that in the development agreement about a commitment to a shared...
There was, and forgive me, I don't have that pulled up, but it's my recollection that there was a piece of the development agreement that talked about, I would ask the developer too if they, if it's possible for them to come up and answer this, but a piece around exploring this topic more.
I don't believe that it explicitly states that there would be an exploration of this topic. I think it is somewhat contained in Counselor Lo's amendment, to the extent that that needs a modification, that it's not in the development agreement as it was written.
So is it possible, then, what you're expressing tonight, can we add that as an amendment to what's already being built into subsection B, but less prescriptive and more just broadening about what that approach could look like?
Beyond merely bike lane, for example?
Exactly.
Looking at Counselor Lo's amendment, trying to see if we can, if it can be adjusted to include something more than merely the adding picture.
Counselor Furman, if I may, I have a suggestion. Mayor, may I have the floor just for a second to make a suggestion? Counselor Furman, what if, at the end of that subpart B that the mayor just raised, so it currently reads, "An adding shared bike locations that will provide greater connectivity for residents, visitors, and business patrons in the area," we changed the period to comma, "and exploring all possible feasible options to increase connectivity with the broader
I can accept that, yeah. I mean, the goal is to keep that option, that option open, so. Okay, well, in that case, I suggest amending, if I can just skip down from section two B, adding the suggested addition that Counselor Lo just had, which was removing the period, adding a comma, and exploring all, I don't remember your exact phrasing.
Point of clarification, "and exploring all possible feasible options to increase connectivity with the broader region." Second.
That was funny, but we needed an original motion and a second, so...
Fair enough.
Maybe Counselor Furman, if you wanted to second, it sounded like the motion actually came from Counselor Lo. I don't know, you guys can decide.
I'm not memorizing his language, though, so. So I move to modify section two, part B, removing the period after area, adding a comma, having it say, "exploring all..." All possible feasible, pardon me, "all possible feasible options to increase connectivity with the broader region." Second.
All right, thank you. Any counsel discussion? All right, please go ahead and cast your vote. That passes 11 yeses and zero nos. Counselor Nystrom.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is an amendment at this point, but I guess the concern that I have and I think some other councilors have is in the development plan, it doesn't specify that these units will be electric, unless I missed it. So I think that's something that's language that should be included in the development plan as well.
Is that a motion?
I move that we include electrification of the units in the, in this development project and have that incorporated into the development plan.
Point of clarity, so when you said units, does that mean also retail or just...
Yeah, yes.
Yes, including retail.
Sorry. I guess, for lack of a better term, the movement should be that we are incorporating electrification into development of the Ben project, so all the facilities included. I know there was a concern about restaurants needing gas, but I think above and beyond that, that should be, that should be the only exception.
Counselor Ryan and Mayor Pertham Sharzai.
So just as a friendly amendment, would you be willing to accept out the electrification requirement in the commercial space?
Yes, but again, that, I think as it was, when you made your presentation earlier this year, was specific to gas lines for restaurant spaces. So, yeah, for, I would say that would be the exception.
Mayor Pertham Sharzai.
That was my question, as long as we're not applying this to the commercial spaces, because that is not something that we've talked about. We've talked about electrification, when we've talked through zoning, you know, about something that we would come back to. Again, I would highlight that this is showcasing that this project continues to have to sort of be this first out the gate on everything, and I would caution us from trying to put everything into this project, like childcare, like electrification, like some of the things we heard from, you know, our former mayor coming in public comment today around ownership. These are things that we aspire to, but it also can't be completely, you know, predicated on this one project. So if we are being thoughtful on the residential electrification, I think that's aligned with us, but to say this 11 hour that also that includes commercial feels a little bit of an overreach. So I just want to make sure that we're crystal clear on that.
So this was discussed in the previous presentation, and the electrification piece for any of it is not in the development plan, again, unless I missed it. The retail spaces, the only ones that require gas are restaurants. There are going to be other retail spaces that should be electric only. That's my point.
Okay, so we need to be a little bit clear, because we have used some interchanged, interchanging verbiage of retail and commercial, or restaurant and commercial. So counsel, we need to be clear, are we accepting commercial or are we just accepting restaurants? Counselor Lo.
I mean, my understanding is what the developer's committing to is full electrification for all 2,100 residential units, and I don't, I don't think we should try it. I mean, that's a, that's a major, I mean, that's a huge win. I mean, no gas hookup, fully electric, 2,100 units. I would be totally comfortable, I think it's reasonable, totally reasonable to codify that, given the other provisions. The language I would suggest is a subpart E that reads, "A provision ensuring all residential units associated with the project are electrified with no gas hookups." That I could support. I don't think that we should go beyond that and sort of try to, I think it could have serious implications for the entire project if we extend that to include retail without a lot more due diligence.
Well, again, my concern, and as you probably know, commercial buildings are one of the biggest users of electricity and power in general, and to, you know, again, I don't know what other uses there would be in commercial spaces other than ovens or stoves for gas. So I'm not clear on what the implications would be for the larger development.
Counsel, Mayor Pertham Sharzai.
Yeah, I guess my hesitation would be it disallows those spaces to change over time to meet needs. So if the space is currently retail, and we've just seen this, I mean, there's a couple of examples of this at Colorado Mills and at Belmar, where these were formerly retail spaces that have been converted to food places and vice versa. So if we are not having any natural gas hookups, which we know is something that they may need, it may disallow and potentially cause us to see vacant storefronts, which I think is counter to what we're hoping for. We want to see this ground floor activation, and so I 100% agree with us holding a hard line on the electrification of the residential, but I do think there needs to be a little bit more thought on like upstream impact for the entirety of the project.
Counselor Nystrom, it's up to you on how you want to word the amendment.
The amendment? Okay. All right, I move that we include in the development agreement and in the amendment here to electrify all residential units in the overall development plan.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, please go ahead and cast your votes. Passes 11 yeses and zero nos. Counselor Ryan.
So, take a look at your inbox and... In your inbox, I took a stab, and you'll also see a little bit of back and forth with Steph, and I guess I would like to hear from the developer on what I'm proposing here, but I don't remember what letters were on. I have F and G, but maybe we're different, but I'm sure Steph can sort out what letters we'd be. First one would be that the developer shall include no less than 25,000 square feet of commercial space in phase one, and no less than 75,500 square feet of commercial space in phase two of the development. I'm using the slide that was used in the presentation tonight. If that's acceptable to the developer, I'd like to offer that. Yes, 25,000 in phase one, I think is what the slide was.
Yeah, I guess the question is... I guess the question back to some of the other council members' point about being prescriptive is there's actually not even a minimum amount of units that we're requiring here, right? Everyone wants to see density in units, but now you're only putting a minimum on retail, so I think we'd like it to be less prescriptive and understand that development requires that.
So here's the problem that I had back in the spring, and that was 100,000 was proposed, and the question was, it's not in the documents. And the response, the theme of the responses were, wait till the development agreement, it'll be in the development agreement, just trust the process. And in your presentation tonight, didn't say 100,000, it was 25,000, and then also the 75,500, which makes me beg the question of, why are we making these promises if we're not actually really sure we're going to do that? Which makes me nervous about that, which is why I want to try and get to the certainty that we can get at least no less than this on the commercial aspect, because it's been promised all year.
Understood, yeah. I think we've always committed to, this is the site plan that we'd like to see come to life and come out of the ground. The commitment that we were discussing about memorializing in our last session was our affordable commitment. That's what we really put effort into kneeling down for the group, or to come back with.
Right.
But I think we do understand your concern and understand if you'd like to propose an amendment. I think we feel like it's a little detrimental to put the minimums in there.
Okay, well, in the second piece, just while you're up there, the developer shall remediate any environmental issues in the northern section of the property prior to development in phase two, which sounds like maybe that's required under state law, I'm not sure if the entire part of the northern section is contaminated so that any, you know, is like, could you use some of the northern section without triggering these things or not? I'd just like to be able to have some commitment in here, even as weak as it is, that there's going to be a cleanup.
Yeah, so under, like, phase two right now, there's a part in the northeast corner that... that technically is, has a no further action letter, so that part would be clean already, according to the state standards. So certainly anything within the developable area of Phase 2 would have to get cleaned up prior to any future development that get, that got done, right? So as a part of either infrastructure or just vertical construction, all of that would have to get done according to the state.
So we'd be okay with?
We would be resubmitting essentially, when we get to that point of, this is what the plan is, this is what we're going to do to clean it up. The state and the city would then have input on what that looks like. Do we need, again, similar pathways to what we're doing in corridors? All of that stuff would get reviewed and approved at that point by both city and state.
So we'd be okay with that second part, that? Yeah, okay. So those are the two amendments I propose. I don't know if it makes sense to break them up separately and vote on them separately.
Yes.
It sounds like maybe it should.
Yeah, let's do that.
So the first one that I propose is the developers shall include no less than 25,000 square feet of commercial space in Phase 1, and no less than 25,500 square feet of commercial space in Phase 2 of the development. That's the motion.
Counselor Isabel Cruz, then Counselor Furman, then Counselor Labir.
Point of order, is there a second?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
Yep.
Thank you, and, and really appreciate, and certainly share where you're coming from on this particular one, Counselor Ryan. I would just, I would love to maybe go back to like the, the latent zoning in this, which is, this is like a, this is like a mixed-use transit zoned area, which if I'm remembering correctly, Mr. Parker and Ms. Mueller, requires ground floor retail in the construction of some of these buildings. Am I remembering that correctly? I know we've dealt more with the new zoning ordinance than the one that's included now, but I would just love to understand what requirements we have already.
Mueller's going to confirm. I believe it's on certain streets, like arterials and collectors. It might not be internal, but she's going to confirm for us.
And I think under the new zoning, we removed that requirement specifically.
We didn't make a lot of changes to mixed-use districts in the new zone.
And this, this would fall under current rule anyway, wouldn't it? Okay.
So, section, let me get the right section here. We're in Article 7 for design. For one, parking within a building or structure, which we're going to be looking at buildings more than likely with this density having parking garages with buildings around it, so 17764. And then you go down to, I believe it is E. Within the transit context, structured parking facilities located adjacent to a public street shall contain retailer office uses on the first floor fronting the street, or be wrapped with development of equal or greater height than the parking structure. At least 50% of the street level facing a public sidewalk, street, or open space shall contain retailer office uses to a minimum depth of 60 feet.
So, so it seems like the answer would be yes, that there would be required retail. I, I just say this to, I, I hear the desire for getting the full amount promised, and I also understand there being a need for flexibility with the changing market conditions. And so to me, if to go vertical in this area, they have to put in retail, to me, it seems more appropriate to use the latent zoning of the proportional retail to, to verticality that's already baked in, rather than adding additional requirements. But that's me, and again, I share where you're coming from and wonder if this is actually the best strategy of getting there.
Counselor Furman, was your comment about this?
It is. I just did want to know, for clarification, there is inherently within the zoning minimums for the residential development, right? Because inherently, we have minimum heights, we have build-to requirements, there is, and so there is fairly significant minimum residential development in an MCT area. So we do have that, and there's, it's worth having something in here, I will say this, because of, while there are requirements there, as you point out, based on the road you're on and how you do the parking, it is easiest, right, to build the minimum commercial. I understand that, but it is also something that we critically want to see here. I'll also note, part of the value in what Counselor Ryan was doing was making sure that commercial beyond the CAR 25 comes early and doesn't come last, because of, again, the commercial, I think, is critical to, frankly, the, the sales tax base that serves some of the value to the city as infrastructure costs go to development. But, so I see a value in what is being proposed, even if it had to be modified, but, because there are, while there aren't within the zoning minimum commercial requirements, there are minimum residential requirements. The, the only minimum commercial is the impacts, for example, in some of these buildings will be the impacts to their open space requirements. If you have no commercial in your single use, you'd end up with a 30% open space.
Counselor Labir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I was just going to add, I just think it's a little, I agree, I think it's a little prescriptive, and my personal view is that these are the kind of things that we should be contemplating more with deeper discussions in the actual zoning code. And, you know, and I think we probably should have had additional discussions on that throughout the year, but, and it wouldn't hurt having a development committee to kind of evaluate those kind of things in the zoning code. But I also think the kind of things we're already putting in this development agreement are things that go beyond every other development that we're going to see in the near future and that we've seen for several years. I mean, in almost 10 years, I've never seen a project have 10% affordable, you know, housing. So I'm, I'm feeling pretty satisfied with, like, some of the small wins in here. And I've never even had a developer contemplate doing electric, you know, heat pumps and electrification of the, of the, of the property. So I, I felt pretty fine with a lot of what was in here, even, and I understand that these things aren't guaranteed. I've had a lot of developers burn me over the years as well. But at the same time, when you can get some, some good wins for the community and the overall goal of the city being served with the, with the supply and a good project, you know, conceptually, I feel pretty comfortable with where we're at, and I, I wouldn't support additional amendments, so, thanks.
Counselor Lowe. Oh, Counselor Ryan.
So going back to the amount of retail that we think the zoning would require, it's, it's hard for me to conceptualize how, what that would translate into. And then, while they're thinking about that, the question I'd have for the developers is, so we need flexibility, even though all of our presentations have been around 100,000, and this is the first time that we've broken out into 2575. What would you feel comfortable with so that we can at least assure our, our constituents that something's going to get built? And I will just say, there's been projects in Ward 4, previous councils, not this council, were promised a mixed use, and they only received apartments, even though the zoning required that. So I don't want to be in that position, again, where we are looking at a mixed use and it really, 90 some odd percent of it is all just residential. So if you could contemplate what you might be flexible with, if we could hear from staff, what, what does this zoning translate into a bare minimum requirement of, is there anything or is it more really aspirational that we just have to have some minimal thing?
I don't think we can translate this into a number. It, it would depend on the types of buildings we see. So there's a requirement, again, if we have parking on a ground floor level, they have to wrap that with retail, right? And we have certain streets that we require, so it's more about street activation than about providing a certain square footage of retails. And it would depend on the size of buildings we saw, the length of the buildings on the street.
I mean, this is a project that's been discussed. Apparently they have vested rights in it already, so do we have any kind of sense based on what has been contemplated as to what that might translate into, at least a ballpark figure?
What our requirements would translate to?
Yeah.
Not until we see some buildings.
Okay. So if I could go back to the developer and get a sense, that would be really helpful.
So when we established, we started out on this project, we're developing this site plan, trying to be thoughtful about mixed use. And we've got a long, long history, a lot of experience in mixed use. And I think, I think the 100,000 or 95,500 that we came up with, that was, that was our thought about how much retail we aspired to have at the project. And so those are ideas that we think we can, we can build a community, have some service-related retail, and then create more of a retail presence, commercial presence on the north side as it has exposure to the highway.
It looks, it looks exciting.
Yeah, so the, so these are, these are our ideas, not some mandated amount or minimum amount that's being pushed on us. I think, I think that's the name of the game in this development business. I, I pulled, our friends at JLL helped me pull a list of, of apartment projects. This is just an example of what's happening today in the marketplace. And so if they polled 16 projects, all of them have 300, 400 units apiece. If you look at the mandated retail, a lot of these are in Rhino and in Denver and different aspect, you know, different parts of town. 198,000 square feet of retail that was forced upon the developers, they're 28% leased today. That's in projects built from 2020 to 2025. And so empty retail is worse than no retail.
No, and, and I get that, and I apologize if I'm, if I'm interrupting. My, I understand retail's difficult.
Yeah.
I also understand that there have been promises that have been repeatedly made to, to get the metro district, to get LRA money, and then tonight. So my question to you is, what numbers are you comfortable with agreeing to? And if you say it's zero, then that's what I'd like to hear, is it's zero. But I need to, I want to hear what you're willing to commit to doing for us going forward, because this is our last shot at, at some of this stuff. We don't get a second bite at the apple.
I want to commit to what the market will bear. And, and we aspire to build a lot of retail, a lot of commercial space. We're hoping at some point, we get an office user that wants to come out of downtown and maybe wants to be here, not just retail. We would love to see lots of commercial uses on this site for full mixed use. I, I just think we need a little flexibility on what the market will bear and the right mix as we go. And, and so I don't know how to commit to a number to you today. I just, I don't know how to do it. I don't know, Al, if you do. But the 100,000 or 95,500 is the number that we came up with, is what we're aspiring to do there.
Okay, but it, it could be 100 square feet if that's what you deem the market to be.
I don't think that's realistic.
Okay, and that's what I'm trying to figure out, what's that in-between number? And it sounds like there's just not a number you're willing to commit to.
I just don't, I don't know the number today. That's a hard question for me to answer.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Furman.
All right, can I ask one quick question to Steph? Because maybe this will help us get to something that will be addressable. When it talks about the requirement for essentially wrapping the parking garage, it's developed space, it's not necessarily retail. The only real retail requirement, right, is if it's facing the road. So I just wanted to make sure I understand, so I'm certain I understand what we're talking about. In this case, the only actual road, though, right, is Fourth. Everything else are plazas, right? Or, because everything else is, I guess I'm not entirely sure what is going to be considered a road that requires that, that facing of retail. Is it just Fourth, or would it be some of those other access, sort of, local roads around the development? If we were just going off of development as we see it today?
Does the spine road count? So I do, I do understand the question that you're asking, and when we took a look at it, we've got private streets, and you've got the plaza area that's being proposed that's to the south, along, let's say, those southern two lots. You've got the turnaround road that comes around. I would consider those to be private accesses or streets. Those also wrap up to what would probably be Third Avenue there in between those four quadrants on the south side. And then you also have private roads that'll come down to an entry point. So let me just pull it up real quick, make sure it doesn't say public. One moment.
Sorry for the need for clarification, but...
No, that's okay. I just need to scroll just a little bit.
It's one of those things where if it turns out to just be Fourth, then maybe we can frame something that helps create some certainty around at least there being...
Absolutely.
Something facing, even if we're not talking about...
Well, and while she's looking at that, I, I don't think, you know, we've been working with the applicant on this site for a while. I don't think anybody thinks that Fourth is the right place for retail. We're, our goal is to have it up and down the spine.
Understood. I'm just trying to think of what's actually required in that sense.
Okay, 764. A little too far. There we go. So yes, if you do want to see that part, I think that if you were to do an amendment, you'd want to clarify that it could be public or private streets, and you could even incorporate it into that section of the code. At the time, it says adjacent to public street, so the only public street that you'd be looking at would be West Fourth. But if you were to make an amendment that it could also be the private streets, then that would be the ability to take a look, because it's at least 50% of a street facing a public sidewalk, street, or open space area. So that would give flexibility then for the private drives that surround three sides of those, let's say, lower two lots out of the four, to be able to have that flexibility to place that. I think the applicant was really looking at wanting to focus as much as possible along the frontage of those lower two quadrants, because they're closest to the plaza space. And so if you wanted to secure that, then maybe tying some language in for that.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
It, it seems like, yeah, the only requirement is in that on Fourth. I don't know that I necessarily want to try and force them onto their access roads, as you point out, Travis. So I'm just looking at other options to make sure that we get the, the sort of commercial activation that we're talking about along that public spine.
Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. Appreciate all the communication about this. Helpful to dig into our zoning yet again. I, to me, this exercise, with all due respect to the intent of this amendment, like demonstrates like why I don't particularly feel comfortable with this amendment, is it's like very specific. We're talking about like consequential decisions late in the process. If there was like a more flexible maximizing commercial activation along the public spine, like that the development agreement speaks to that, that's fine. That feels like our job. I, it just does not feel like our job to put in the ordinance that there's 100, at least 100,000 in retail or in commercial. And I, and I don't think that our conversation has given me confidence that our determination on that is going to be like the best way to do the best thing for our community here.
Counselor Ryan.
Just based on that conversation that Counselor Furman had, I wonder if another way of going about this, so if you added up the, the minimum requirements of commercial retail on the public and private roads, not that you'd have to build on the private roads, but if you took that minimum requirement and you agree that you'll exceed that number, I don't know what that number is, but it sounds like it would be incredibly lower than what, what's been brought to us before. Would that be something you'd be willing to do as our flexibility?
Sure.
Okay. Could I have staff help me with that verbiage? Because I didn't quite follow, but it sounded like if you added up the public and the private roads, and it's that requirement of commercial space that they agree that would exceed that number.
Could I call for the question?
Second.
Well, I think...
You need to have the floor to call the question.
Yeah.
Do you?
Because I intend to revise the motion.
We might need some more help trying to understand what you're asking us to write.
So the conversation was that you could use the private roads and the public roads to determine what the amount of commercial retail would be. Not that you would be required to build on the private road, but you would add those two numbers together and agree that you would exceed that number. I just want to make sure we have some commercial component in here that...
So maybe the answer would be to take any requirement that would have been along Fourth and apply that to the spine instead?
Where they choose to build it in the, in the project, that's fine. But they have a minimum requirement of commercial space based on that discussion you had with Furman, Counselor Furman. And I see nods on the head in the back there as to how we might do that. So I'm...
To get my head around the, the crux of the, the crux of this is, the developer will be required to exceed any requirement, any commercial space requirement on the site.
Yes.
Can we just, yeah, say that, and then we can get the language in the development agreement?
Sure. I think she was saying you can include private and public roads as part of your calculation.
Okay, yeah, understood.
I understand the question as you were saying it. I guess I was getting to the point that the code provision that was read states specifically "Public Street," and we know that the only public street that we would be looking at facing on with the southern portion is West Fourth Avenue. All the internal roadways that would be accessible would then be private streets maintained by the Metro District. If you wanted to include that component in it, it requires up to 50% to be utilized for that space. So then it would provide the flexibility, but that would be a question I would again say, you know, applicant, is that seem reasonable to you?
And I just did that with the applicant, and they seemed to be comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think where you're going is we're going to end up with a lot lower of a number or a threshold here that we're, that we're willing to exceed, but it might have convoluted language. And so maybe just to make it clean, if, you know, we're willing to put pretty low thresholds and say we'll exceed. So can we exceed 10,000 on the south and 30,000 on the north? And we'll say the developer commits to exceed.
I'll take what I can get, yeah.
Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. It, it seems to me that the big picture is, do we want the council to be prescriptive and then flesh out the numbers or whatever? Or does, is the council's pleasure that we're not prescriptive? And so it seems like we need to vote on the question of having such an amendment to prescribe and let staff work on that, or if the vote goes the other way, then staff doesn't have to work on it. So if I, is it appropriate now to call for the question? I do. Thank you.
We do need a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second to call the question. That is not debatable, so if we could go ahead, please. And the first vote is to call the question.
Just as a point of order, or information, sorry, information, are we voting on calling the question on the amendment as originally drafted or this new 10,000, 30,000 thing? I just want to know what I'm voting on. Calling the question on an amended amendment or the original amendment?
The amendment that's on the floor.
Great, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna, I need to clear it out, and then if everybody will just please vote again. All right, and that passes nine yeses and two noes. So that means that we are now moving to vote on the amendment that Counselor Ryan had brought forward originally with the 25,000, 75,000. Do we have a motion on the floor in a second? Please go ahead and cast your vote. Oh, shoot. Oh, sorry, you guys, I need to do that again. Please go ahead and cast your vote again. And that fails, three yeses, eight noes, the noes being Strom, LeBure, LeBure, Cruz, Kay, Black, Sharazai, Sinks, Cruz, aye, and Lo. Counselor Ryan, your next amendment?
Developer shall remediate any environmental issues in the northern, in the north section of the property prior to development in Phase Two. Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any discussion on this? Mayor Porta, I'm Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to understand the intention, because I think we heard, like, we know legally you cannot build in Phase Two. Yes, you would not be able to move dirt unless CDPHG gave you the green light. We've seen this happen at Westland. So I'm, I guess, is this like reinforcing that? Like, does it, Phase Two, is that encompassing parts of the land that is not needing to be remediated? So I would love to just understand that thinking.
So, as I understood it, and maybe I misunderstood, the person from, environmental person, I apologize, I forgot your name, mentioned that there is some portion of the northern section that does need to be remediated before building. I don't know that that necessarily means that no section of the northern part can be built prior to cleaning up. My concern is, again, that the promise that was made is that this property is going to get cleaned up. There's no assurance in this development agreement that that will happen. It perhaps might be an incentive to the developer, or a developer, whether it's this one or a future one, to clean it up so that they can develop that. But someone may say, it's not worth us to develop this portion of the northern section because we will have to incur cleaning it up from the environmental perspective. Why don't we just build on that section, which we can build on without having to clean up the capped area? So that's my concern that I'm trying to address. Maybe it's an overly paranoid concern, but it is a concern, because, again, this is the only time we get to address that.
So there's a certain part of the, the northern parcel that is developable. It's the area directly north of Fourth. The part that's clean with the Northwater action letter is off to the northeast corner. So that's not a developable, developable piece, right? It's designated as open space.
Yeah, I hope you can show the projection on the screen. There's a map that I can help you with.
Do we have a motion on the floor for this one?
We do.
Oh, the overheads? Oh, gotcha.
So that piece there that's outlined is the, the, the developable piece of the northern parcel. So that area is the one that's, that's under the consent decree through the state, and that has to go through applications, modifications to the existing plans in order to develop on it. So what that looks like in terms of remediation, there's different ways to remediate, right? So if, if there's impacts down to 30 feet, it may be impractical to remove 30 feet down of, of impacts, right? So then you use other things like engineered barriers, institutional controls, all of which, again, still get reviewed, approved by the state in order to do those. So for instance, in, in areas of Rhino, we've done things where if there's a basketball court, so if everyone knows, DeNargo Market, right, is a big one downtown in Rhino. There's areas of that that are now remediated to the extent practical, which means they've been cleaned up for infrastructure, for grading purposes, whatever. But then they have engineered barriers on top of them to cap that in place, and then that just needs to be maintained over time, right? Over, for the lifetime of the property and through ownership. So all of those things get worked out through the state and through, you know, again, working with the city of Lakewood to make sure that those things are done to the, to the satisfaction of, of both entities officially. Does that help clear it up? So it essentially is getting remediated depending on what's done or what's needed?
Some portion of the northern... Some portion of the northern section can be developed without having to go through remediation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the point of this, is to say, before we develop the northern section, it gets cleaned up. Because otherwise, we just don't develop that section of the northern section that needs to be cleaned up. And we've given LRA money, we've given Metro District money, and we never see it get cleaned up. That was part of the whole reason that we did the LRA money. So I think this council should expect some assurance that this is going to get cleaned up. And this is the bare minimum that I could possibly think of, because, again, we have no assurance otherwise.
And my suggestion, I guess, would be to the extent allowable and practical by, you know, between this, this state of Colorado and city of Lakewood.
Counselor Isabel Cruz, then Counselor Furman.
Thanks. Would you mind just pulling up the cell phone map again?
Don't show that.
They've been on TV now.
I'm sorry, this was in our presentation, and we should have cut it back. So, so where the green is, this is really tiny, but the green, there's the green and the orange, and both of them have restrictions. The green is largely covering Fourth Street, so everything basically above the green is what you're saying is developable area. The other area that has a boundary on it, that's RDT tracks. And so it's where my...
Take the mic that's next to you.
Okay. Yep. So where my finger is, is actually the dog park, and then above that is our stormwater pond. So when we're talking about developable area that doesn't currently have a restriction or a cap on it today, it's a small triangle. So if I were to approximate what that is, I don't know, maybe it's like 1/6 the developable area on the north or something.
Thank you.
Orange and green are both caps.
Essentially, anything that's not shaded is what we're talking about?
Anything that's not shaded does not have a CDPHG cap over it, correct? Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And here's our northern piece, really just above. There you go.
Kara has a better map, or Ms. Mueller has a better map.
I don't know if it's a better map, but let's see if we can get Geosmart in here.
Just go to the menu bar, Kara.
Menu bar?
Yeah, the PowerPoint. Are you looking for your presentation?
No.
Oh.
Do we have Geosmart in here? Do you know if we have Geosmart in here?
Oh, I don't know. I can get it from the website.
Yeah, I think that one's on. Show it.
Won't we give Ms. Mueller a chance to pull that up? Counselor Furman?
That'd be great. Actually, my question's probably quick and easy. But for clarification, can you tell me when it comes to cleaning up these two areas? If you were to, say, carve off a three-acre parcel to sell off and have it developed, are you still required to do cleanup through the entire area once you start impacting the area? Or are you required only to, I think of like your basketball court, court, sort of, example? Or are you only required to clean up the area you are immediately going to be impacting?
So it depends on how that agreement gets worked out. But in general, if you're going to split it up into four individual pads, usually the developer would be responsible for the infrastructure part of it, right? And then the individual developer who's going in there would be responsible for cleaning up that specific pad.
So it'll be, it'll be piece, piece by piece based on the pad when it's developed?
Depending on how it exceeds.
So to clarify, Counselor Ryan, is, is your saying on G, any, any environmental issue? Does that mean all environmental issues in that northern section?
You're right. That was not as artful as I could have. Any environmental conditions required under the state or federal law to be remediated?
So the whole parcel?
The whole northern parcel.
Whole northern parcel. Okay, thank you.
It's another screen. So this is what we call our property management layer, and this is West Fourth as it comes through, and this is the northern piece, as you can see, outlined here. And that's where the, the tracks go over right now. So you're looking at just this tiny little piece that sits right here, south of West Sixth. That easement goes across Fourth here, and that is the area that you were speaking of that is encumbered, that would need to be cleaned before you could do anything. There'll even be some remediation happening with improvements to West Fourth.
Yeah, correct.
Counselor Lo.
All right. Let me try to do just a little level setting here, because we are getting awfully in the weeds on this. I, I mean, look, respectfully, I think Counselor Ryan, like, has a fair, I understand where he's coming from here. Like, I get his argument. Like, there were, there were promises about remediation on the northern plot, and he, he's uncomfortable with the idea of development happening on part of the northern plot without remediation. Like, I get it. It's, it's a fair point, and I don't want to suggest it's not. We just, let me just make sure that I'm, I'm track. So just to summarize what we've been talking about here, there are chunks of land in the northern plot that, that would need to be remediated if they're built on, but there are chunks, there are significant, very significant chunks of land where we would not, where, where building would happen or could happen without remediation. That's, that's, that's the bottom line, right?
At least infrastructure, based on the stormwater detention pods, yeah.
So, I mean, can I just ask the, the developer, I mean, in, in terms of their, their planning for the northern plot, like, is there... So, I mean, can I just ask the developer, I mean, in terms of their planning for the northern plot, like, is there? I both think this is a legitimate concern, and I'm just, I'm a little frustrated because like this is, I hate trying to sort of manage things of this magnitude of significance and complexity at like 10:30 at night from the dais. I just, it's bad practice, and here we are doing it, and it's no one's fault. I'm not aiming that at anyone. It's just like a frustrating situation. And I also think that like, just big picture, this is a really valuable worthwhile project, and it's been negotiated for a year. And I think like this is the last city council meeting of the year. And I continue to believe that it is worth moving this forward and not further delaying it. So in the spirit of trying to figure this out, like, is the applicant comfortable making a commitment at this time to remediate the northern plot before they start building on it? Or would that be a problem? Or is that a sufficiently complicated question that it needs to be looked at further before a commitment can be made, which is a reasonable answer? Well, while the applicant is considering that one, maybe I'll try to just buy them 60 seconds of time to consider the question of that. I mean, let me direct a question to staff. On the flip side of all this, my understanding is, you know, it's not like we're, my understanding is like if the arid question is not being developed, it also isn't being disturbed. And therefore, there isn't like an environmental issue with developing in other parts of the northern plot. So I mean, I guess let me ask staff, is that accurate? That like development can occur in other parts of the northern plot without environmental concerns? As long as the sort of the area that's under the contamination order is not disturbed?
Probably a better question for our expert here, but our understanding is, yeah, it's capped now. If you're not disturbing it, there's no environmental issue to resolve. You only have to resolve something if you dig down into it.
Correct. Yes. So there are pieces out of the northern parcel that do not require any sort of remediation as they sit right now because they were previously cleaned up by the GSA and the federal government.
And there'd be no issue with people living in apartment complexes on the northern plot next to that area as long as that area was not disturbed?
Correct.
Okay, I, thank you. I would still be interested in the applicant's just sort of take on all of this.
I think that generally, we at NO Means are trying to get out of remediating the north. And we are going to develop the north. That is the intention. The one caveat is we're trying to understand is the language that is used is maybe implies that you remediate the entire north at once. And we haven't gotten far enough to decide, are we remedying everything in one, at one time? Or is it going to be maybe more in two to three phases, like depending on where roads go or where paths go in time? And so I think we are just trying to, I guess, discuss, does it make sense to accept or say that we would advocate for that language because we certainly want to clean it up? Or does that maybe put us in a compromised position later when we start to do maybe more planning and get closer to it? And we realize, well, we probably would have phased that remediation. But I think that maybe what we would ask is that you propose your language and everyone take their vote on that amendment.
I mean, from your answer, I mean, it just strikes me that there's a way, I mean, we're trying not to be overly prescriptive about this. I mean, from the answer I just heard you give, it sounds like there would be a comfort with a, with general guidance to staff that we want to see remediation occur in the north concurrent with the north being developed. Like, I mean, I can go ahead and try to wordsmith that at 10:30 at night, and I'm not directing that at anyone. But I, like, it seems like there's a way that we could add a sentence of guidance to staff that basically says, a provision ensuring that environmental remediation will happen in Phase Two concurrent with the north being developed, you know, subject to staff negotiating details with the applicant, or something like that.
I think we're on the same page, would agree with that. I think the reality is the remediation could happen in phases.
All right. So I think based on this discussion, I'd prefer something a little bit less prescriptive that sort of addresses the thrust of Counselor Ryan's concern. That basically says, you know, environmental remediation of the northern section of the site shall be undertaken by the applicant concurrent with development of the site, subject to staff negotiating the final details in the agreement, or something along those lines.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. As long as we're talking about the site is Phase Two and not that very portion of the property that needs to be cleaned up before they can get to it, right? This is like, so anyway, as staff had said before, we're okay, you know, they'll figure out the wordsmith for the development agreement. I'm trying to just make sure we hold folks' feet to the promises that were made to get the LRA money and to get the Metro District. And a really, really big one beyond the affordability piece was clean this thing up. So that's the only part of this to get in there. So I think, and I'm telling, and what I'm saying too, Counselor Lo had asked a question earlier about his amendment, is whether I would vote for the underlying ordinance and development agreement if I agree to that. What I would say is if we can agree with this language and put it through, I will vote for this despite, I think, there are some huge warts that we can discuss later. But if we can get this part, I can be a yes.
Okay, I have three hands up. Counselor Isabel Cruz, Counselor Nystrom, and then Counselor Sinks.
Thank you. And potentially, maybe there is like a more flexible version that we can get to with this. At least in what I'm hearing what you're saying, Counselor Ryan, the concern is not that building will happen on environmentally unsafe land. It is that building will happen where convenient, and then other things will be left. And I hear that, and I share that concern. And I'm also slightly concerned that in trying to control for that too much in this, that we're actually then further disincentivizing getting anything out of it, right? Because if we say, as sort of the applicant heard, which is sort of what I heard in this amendment, it's kind of like you got to do the whole thing if you're going to do anything up there. And so even in thinking about your worst, because frankly, to me, that tiny little portion that we were demonstrated does not seem like a market feasible way of using that much land. And so to me, in the worst case scenario that we're contemplating, which I think is important, right, is that if not all of that land is developed, right, maybe they only do a portion of it, they only do half of it, a provision requiring all of it to be remediated would then maybe incentivize no development up there. It would incentivize leaving it fallow, right? And so that, I think, is just like the danger of doing this in this manner. And maybe there is just like a flexible point of language that we haven't arrived at that will fix this concern. I just worry that even something with the best intention might leave us in a worse place that you're not intending with the way that the approach on this is going so far.
Counselor Nystrom.
So question and comment, and this might be for staff. If development has started, Phase One is completed, and then the developer decides to sell this land. You know, we've gone through the LRA and the Metro District and all of that. Is it feasible that they could sell that portion of the parcel without developing or remediating anything?
So let me repeat that back to you. Are you talking about a portion of Phase Two northwest Fourth Avenue?
Yes, well, the part in question that needs remediation.
So right now, it is all proposed to be platted as one lot with the plot that we're looking at now. So if you sold a portion of a platted lot, it would be an illegal subdivision. And while you can sell anybody anything, they would have to come back through and replat before they could be issued any building permits or get any approvals for development. So yes, you could sell a piece of land to someone, but it gets back to the development question. So if they only wanted to sell, let's say, if someone wanted to sell you just the portion that's in the no further action area that was outside of the easement that was shown earlier, if it's not platted that way, we would have to, you would come to us and we would say, you need to plat this before you can do any development. Show me you have access, everything else. So it would be going back through a plating process and putting that into place. So it's not worth anything to you without going through that process. And obviously, you could just plat off that piece. So it's not a direct response that someone would have to absolutely clean up the remaining piece. But ultimately, at the end of the day, before you can put a shovel in it, you're going to have to mediate it.
Okay, and if the developer starts the project, they complete Phase One, and then they decide they want to sell the entire parcel? Are the same commitments required? And I guess I share Counselor Ryan's concerns, right? That, you know, we've gone through this whole process, and money's been allocated. And yet, there still seems to be concern that that aspect of this plat will never be taken care of.
And so it is my understanding with the question is, is that, you know, when will this be mitigated? Is pretty much the concern that is there?
Yes, and if they don't mitigate it, but they sell it to someone else?
They will be required, if under the development agreement, as the owner, Aaron, assigned, to be responsible for what the agreement says. Now, the agreement obviously has a timeline that it's, you know, vested with. But at the end of the day, in order to develop, they're still going to have to mitigate it because the city does not mitigate private property, nor do we build public improvements that are required for development.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Counselor Sinks, then Counselor Ryan.
Thank you. I'm for the mitigation of all of the dangerous substances. However, I don't believe that G is the right wording. And so I do not intend to support G. However, I think afterwards, after the vote is taken, we see what the results are, I would like staff to draw something up that could maybe be better worded and would indicate that, what the council would like to see with the mitigation in a non-prescriptive but realistic sort of way. So I've just turned my hand on that, and thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Yeah, and I'm open to phrasing this differently. But again, the whole reason we started with this whole thing with giving LRA money and doing the Metro District was we had someone come in talking about a blight study. And the crux of the blight study was this property is contaminated, and nobody will develop this because it is contaminated. And yet, we seem to be hesitant to put any kind of language in about cleaning up the property. I understand the late hour. I got to tell you, I was dismayed when I read the development agreement because the promises were just wait until the development agreement, and we'll have all these things that we promised in our presentations in the spring will be in the development agreement. And I'm grateful to the developer, after meeting with one of the developers' representatives, made a number of, added the language that was promised about the residential. So I give props to that representative, and I give props to the developer to listen to their representative on that aspect. But that wasn't the only thing. It is one of the things I really, really, really want to vote yes on this because of that. But we got to come up with some kind of language that's going to say, we developer promise that we are going to clean this sucker up. Because without that, it's kind of a false promise that we were led down. And so I'm open to ideas from the developer to, and this is not the first time it was raised with the developer. This was something I've expressed concerns about in the spring, and have had talks with the developers' representative about this issue. And so I'm open to the language. But by gosh, we cannot vote to approve this without some language that says this thing's going to get cleaned up.
Counselor Ryan, can you help clarify for me, looking in the development agreement in Section 7A, I mean, I see it here, owners shall mitigate environmental impacts associated projects in accordance with state law, federal law, yada, yada. So I'm trying to understand what is it that you're asking for that takes it?
So as I understand, 7A is as construction is happening, it's going to disturb dirt. And it's going to, there are requirements during the construction process to make sure that there's not environmental issues that are spread or caused by the construction itself. It is silent, the development agreement itself is silent as to any kind of form of cleanup. That might have been in the, in one of the other agreements. But it sounds like there's not an appetite to wait for those other agreements. So what I'm suggesting is let's put some minimal language in here that says, developer's going to clean this sucker up. And the best way I can come up with was through this. Because frankly, if we just say, well, we're only, we're concerned that they won't develop the northern section, that kind of calls the bluff, though, that, well, maybe you weren't actually going to clean this thing up. And if we just say, well, you only have to clean up that portion that you have to clean up as you develop the property, it sure gives me a great incentive to not develop that portion of the property because I saved myself a whole heck of a lot of money. And yet, that was the whole reason the project came and sprung into life where we said, yes. And I voted for LRA money because of the cleanup. I want to see this property cleaned up. I'd love to see this property activated. But be true to your promises. That's what I'm asking for. That's what I'm asking the developer for.
Mayor Protam Charzai.
Yes, thank you. I hear you. I think that many of us have disagreed with you, though. And so I'm not sure that there's anybody that's offering up something that's going to satisfy what you're hoping to accomplish here. Because I would reinforce the point that I heard from Counselor Cruz on this of just, I, for me, it feels like an opportunity for us to sort of dissuade any like incremental development that's going to happen because this is so expansive. So people aren't offering up suggestions, so I'm going to call the question. Let's vote, and then we can rework if we need to. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to call the question. That is not a debatable motion, so please go ahead and cast your vote. That passes eight yeses, three noes, the noes being Sinks, Furman, and Nystrom. Okay, so then back to Counselor Ryan, your original amendment. Do you want to do the wording as?
Developers shall remediate any environmental issues as required by law in the north section of the property prior to development in Phase Two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We've done a lot of discussion already. I don't see any hands up. Please go ahead and cast your vote. And that fails. Five yeses, six noes, the noes being Labure Black, Charzai, Sinks, is Counselor I Cruz and Lo. Counselor Lo.
Look, I hate to belabor this, but I do think Counselor Ryan was, I agree with the thrust of what he was saying. So I would move the following additional provision as an addition to Section 7A. as, as an addition to, to Section 2 in the, in the ordinance. A provision ensuring environmental remediation by the applicant of the northern plot of land concurrent with the development with the northern plot of land as part of Phase 2. And my thought is that that a lot, that the sort of the concurrent word allows more flexibility and allows staff to sort of negotiate with
Second.
With the developer on, on exactly how that gets implemented.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Isabel Cruz.
I just, I just want to say for the record, I think that this is a great place to get. I just don't want there to be any meaning imbued in words like concurrent that could potentially be more restrictive than we. And I, I trust that you all, staff, maybe have heard this very wonderful, colorful discussion of like what we're looking for here. Just like want to state for the record that it is, that I am not looking for a strict interpretation of this amendment in the agreement. Thank you.
Counsel Sinks, then Counsel Lo.
Just to echo that, I am looking also for staff to improve upon this, this thrown-together wording. So thank you in advance for doing that.
Counsel Lo.
Having moved that amendment, I guess I would, I mean, I'm going to read it one more time. A provision ensuring environmental remediation by the applicant of the northern plot of land concurrent with the development with the northern plot of land as part of Phase 2. It's the best I could do at 10:40 at night. Sorry, folks. Is, is that, does that, my question is, does that give staff enough direction, flexibility to negotiate something in the developer agreement? And does the applicant, I mean, the answer I, from, from the discussion I heard from the, the applicant, it, it feels like there's a commitment to do the remediation, but the question of how it gets phased in is important. So this is an effort to capture that. It's, it's frankly important to me that we be able to go back to the community with a, a better answer to, to the, the concern Counsel Ryan raised than I feel like we had a minute ago.
Could we, could we get that read one more time, much slower?
Yes. And I'll, I'll email it to you, too. So adding, adding one more provision, I don't, I've lost track of whether we're on F or G or whatever at this point, to Section 2. A provision ensuring environmental remediation by the applicant of the northern plot of land, comma, concurrent with the development with the northern plot of land as part of Phase 2. I'm happy to take any friendly amendments to that, that, that our, our city attorney thinks are, are necessary to make that, make that make sense.
Given the discussion, I, I think it's, I think it's clear enough that we can try and work through this into the development agreement. I don't have any specific suggestions.
Okay. I will agree with Counsel Cruz for the record, that I would, I, the, the goal here is to sort of provide high level, you know, they make clear that we think the environmental remediation is an important long-term goal, if the northern plot is to be developed. But that we also want to structure this in a way that doesn't inadvertently deter any development on the northern plot at all. So I totally agree with that as an important goal here, and how this language gets hashed out in the final developer agreement. It's a good thing that we have staff that are smart enough to figure out how to, how to strike the balance perfectly on that.
All right. I have no other hands up. Let's please go ahead and cast your votes. That passes 10 yeses and one no, the noe being Labure. Counsel Furman.
We were close to agreement on before we called the vote.
Okay.
All judgments aside, Counsel Lo, I think it's critically important that there is some baseline of commercial for a variety of reasons. It seemed like the applicant was willing to agree to, I believe it was 10 and 30. So I moved to amend, and I think it's G now. I'm just going to use Counsel Ryan's prior language, but change the numbers. Developer shall include no less than 10,000 square feet of commercial space in Phase 1, and no less than 30,000 square feet of commercial space in Phase 2 of the development.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Counsel Sinks.
So refresh my mind, did, did we agree that staff would work on the wording on that? What?
We didn't pass anything like that.
The wording was more to do with Wrong button. Sorry. The wording had more to do with, we were going to include the, the sort of effort to look at the amount of space required, if you were to include. Anyway, it had more to do with a, a separate effort at square footage. I think this was a, a sort of effort by the applicant to come up with a number that was achievable, that didn't require complex math and assessment of, of required amounts. So this was a little more straightforward. And while, I will say, while I know there's a number of people who want to avoid prescriptive numbers, I do think in, in some of these areas, prescriptive is the only way forward because of its, there's some baselines that I think are necessary to have it contribute to the community in ways that are going to be most relevant. So.
So yours differs, I'm sorry, just not able to see what you just said. How does yours differ, Furman? Counselor Ryan's?
I went with the numbers that were deemed as acceptable. So instead of the 25,000 square feet, it was 10,000 in Phase 1. And instead of 75,500, it was 30,000 in Phase 2.
All right. Seeing no hands up, please go ahead and cast your vote. That passes nine yeses, two noes, noe being Labure and Sinks. Do we have any additional amendments? All right. So we are back to the ordinance as amended.
I call the question.
I'll second him, whatever.
All right. We have a motion on the floor and a second to call the question. Vote for the ordinance. That is non-debatable. So please cast your vote first to call the question. That passes eight yeses, three noes, the noe being Labure, Furman, and Nystrom. All right. So moving on to, gosh, that was a long time ago. We have a motion on the floor and a second for the original ordinance. So this, then, we would be voting as amended. That passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Okay. Will the clerk please read Item 7D into the record?
Second reading in public hearing on Item 7D. Ordinance O-2025-39, an emergency ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement for the lease of property located at 8,000 West Colfax Avenue, Lakewood, Colorado, buy-in between the City of Lakewood, Colorado, and Volunteers of America.
All right. And with this one, we will not be getting a presentation here in chambers tonight. But again, there is a presentation available on LakewoodSpeaks.org. May I please have a motion?
Mayor, I move for the adoption of Ordinance O-2025-39 on second and final reading.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor and a second. Any council discussion or questions? Counselor Isabel Cruz.
Thank you. We got a question on Lakewood Speaks, just about a bit of the transition from what had been known as the Recovery Works facility to now kind of the agreement that's coming forward with Volunteers of America. So I just love, although I think we have been briefed well as council, I know many of us at some community meetings have heard a lot from Mr. Connor on this topic. I think for anyone still listening at this wonderful hour of night, it might just be good to provide a little bit of context on where we are and why this agreement might look a little different than some people expected.
Thanks, Counselor Cruz. My name is Chris Connor. I'm manager of Housing and Thriving Communities and steward in this, this process. Yeah, the difference between Recovery Works and Volunteers of America. Recovery Works, we're very much indebted to bringing the opportunity of, of acquiring the navigation center to the City of Lakewood and being an operator in that space for a good long time, up until April, when we closed it down for renovations. They vacated the space at that time. And during that time, during renovations, we did a full competitive procurement for the scope of services that would be provided upon reintroduction of the facility. The, the prevailing party for that procurement was Volunteers of America, and we entered contract with them to provide services in the navigation center in October 29. So the lease pairs to that operations contract with Volunteers of America. And Recovery Works remains a, a very good partner to City of Lakewood. We still contract with them to provide services by other means to people experiencing homelessness. However, they would not be the resident tenant or the lead provider of services in that space.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then also, I think we've got some questions about why this is an emergency ordinance. Can you just speak a little bit to the timeline of that and what that implication of that is for occupying this space sooner rather than later under the lease?
Yes. The challenge that we're met with is to have a facility that is ready in alignment with an operating partner to come in and provide services within that space. We want those closely aligned. And what we don't want to happen is we have a facility that's ready to go and ready to be turned on, all but for not being able to lease the facility to that operating partner. So we already do have Volunteers of America under contract to provide operations. But we want the full, robust agreement. So we require that, that lease to come in line. And we anticipate that the, the facility will be ready in time, pretty imminently by the end of the year here. And we want to be able to provide Volunteers of America a lease immediately upon that facility being ready to go, so we can provide the most nights off the streets as possible to people.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation, which I hope is, is helpful to anybody who's listening. And also, just thank you for the diligent, I think, community outreach on this. I know on the West Colfax corridor, a lot of folks had a lot of questions across these couple of months. And I know you've engaged with our board meetings, the West Colfax Community Association meetings and, and further. So I just wanted to thank you and staff for your work on that.
Of course.
All right. I have no additional hands up. So please go ahead and cast your vote. That passes 11 yeses and zero noes. Thank you, Mr. Connor.
For staying all night.
For staying all night. Okay. And that brings us to our next, next section of general public comment. And we do still have a few of you here. Yay. Okay. So first up, we have David Aguirre, and then Artemis Winter. Welcome.
Do, is, do I have the timer, or is there no timer?
There's a timer.
Beautiful. Sorry. I won't keep you, I won't keep you guys late. I know it's already 11 o'clock. I just wanted to, my name is David Aguirre. I'm, I work for Representative Brittany Pedersen, who represents the Colorado's 7th Congressional District. Now that Congress is back open, there, we do have some updates to give. The ACA tax credits do remain a problem for Congress. To put it in loose terms, in Jeffco, families could see their monthly bills go up about 161%. And it's even larger in the southern part of our district. In the entirety of Colorado, we have 4.2 million people who may go uninsured if this issue is not getting fixed. Rep. Pedersen has been fighting to extend these life-saving premiums, and our office is here to support the community. If you've been impacted, our team is collecting stories. So please feel free to reach out to our office. We expect to vote on the ACA extensions, but it's unclear if it will be a bipartisan vote on that bill. Rep. Pedersen was proud to support the survivors of Epstein, to vote for the release of the Epstein files, and support transparency and accountability for all perpetrators. As for our district office work that is upcoming, we just held a senior fraud event in a Brookdale housing facility with the FBI earlier today. We have a mobile office hours in South Jeffco at the Columbine Library from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. So if you know anybody that is having an issue with a federal agency, please have them reach out. And as an example, we just had another member of a city council reach out and give us a IRS question, essentially was, they, a business had applied for a tax, tax exempt status during the shutdown, or right before the shutdown, and they haven't heard from the IRS yet. So our office is working to, to fix an issue like that. And we deal with that all the time. So please send them our way. And congratulations to Councilwoman Black for your recent election and all of the reelections that happened on council. And I hope you guys have a wonderful rest of your night. I'm going to go home and go to sleep.
Thank you. So next up, that I think may not actually be here, I have Artemis Winter, Lazarus Moore, and Tonya Allen. Nope. Okay. Nicholas Mundon.
Good evening, city council members. The recently released community survey results indicate a commendable level of resident satisfaction on key metrics. However, a comprehensive analysis of the survey's methodology reveals substantial concerns regarding its statistical validity, validity, and representativeness. Only 650 residents participated, participated in the survey, relative to an estimated total, total population of 15,868. This participation rate constitutes a marginal 4.1% of Lakewood's populace. The extremely low percentage of the population surveyed raises serious doubts as to whether the results accurately reflect the opinions of the entire community. It is highly probable that a broader, more representative sample would yield significantly, significantly different findings. Given the statistical limitations and questionable validity, the expenditure associated with this survey warrants closer scrutiny. The cost of constructing the survey must be regularly weighed against the utility and reliability of its findings. The current data, data makes it difficult to justify classifying this as a statistically valid survey. The survey results even acknowledge their methodological limitations, underscore critical areas that require concentrated effort from the city administration. A paramount concern is the necessity for improved response to service calls. This suggests that current response times or the quality of assistance provided are not meeting resident expectations. The express demand that the city prioritize treating residents of all backgrounds fairly indicates a perception of systemic inequities or differential treatment within the community of, or city services. The city must establish improved service response and equitable treatment of all residents as a top priority. This necessitates strategic investment in public safety, mandatory staff training on implicit bias, and rigorous accountability mechanisms for service delivery across all neighborhoods. The level of dissatisfaction is exacerbated by a clear, clear conflict in housing preferences. It's unsurprising that Lakewood residents express a desire for affordable housing, but simultaneously demonstrate resistance to its development within their immediate neighborhoods. The inherent conflict in housing goals can only be mitigated by adoptive, innovative urban, urban planning strategies, specifically through the implementation of mixed income developments. This approach integrates affordable market rate housing within the same projects, promoting socioeconomic diversity, and challenging exclusionary zone practices. I again advocate for Lakewood to structure its housing affordability targets based on a tiered system, similar to Arapahoe County's push for an 80% AMI threshold, as previously suggested. The average cost of living in Lakewood is $2,552. Positioning The average cost of living in Lakewood is $2,552, positioned in the top 9% of the world's most expensive cities and 161st in Colorado. The median after-tax salary is $5,105, which is sufficient to cover living expenses for approximately two months. The average monthly expenditure for a single individual in Lakewood is estimated at $2,330. Primarily driven by housing costs, this data directly supports the statistics that approximately 60% of all Lakewood renters and 20% of homeowners are considered cost burdened, spending more than 30% of their income on housing alone.
Your time is expired, Mr. Mundon.
Furthermore, some reports indicate that a quarter of renters allocate over 50% of their income to rent. We have a moral and practical imperative to improve the situation. Residents should not be forced to choose between housing security and adequate nutrition. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's our last speaker for tonight. We do not have a general business or executive report, so we'll move on to city council reports. And with that, I'll start with Ward 5.
Okay. The next Ward 5 meeting will be on January 10th at 9:00 AM at West Woods Church. The next Sustainability Committee meeting is this coming Friday, the 12th, at 11:30 at the CMO Conference Room. And could somebody in staff help me out? I'm brain cramped. The tree recycling starts the day after Christmas, correct? Yeah, sorry. Okay, just to, anybody that might listen to this, that, that is an option, it will be in the, the greenhouse down on Yale as well. Maybe a little bit off topic here, but there is a pet food recall that does impact Colorado, and pets are dying as a result. It's a frozen food, dog food from Bonne Hill Farms, so share that information with your neighbors. And I think that's it.
I was just going to say, if you're listening to this, I encourage you to go to sleep. Good night.
Ward 4.
We just had our December Ward meeting, so no more for the rest of the year. Hope you enjoy that. One thing that is, you might want to put on your calendar, though, in Ward 4, and frankly, across the region, is the city is studying how to better use Green Mountain and the trails. And their next open house, and maybe the last open house, I'm not sure, but it sounds like it might be, is December 18th at the Green Mountain Rec Center from 5:30 to 7:00 o'clock. So if you use, enjoy, or know somebody who uses or enjoys that, please get the word out, because things are going to happen, and I'd love to have our input in there.
I don't have anything to add other than the fact that we're looking at scheduling our next meeting, haven't done so yet, but we're going to hopefully try and engage economic development if we can.
Ward 3.
Yes, we have our Ward 3 holiday happy hour tomorrow in less than 24 hours, 4:30 to 6:30 at Old 121 Brew House. Be sure to go to the, the old location, not the new one that just opened in the last week. Go to the one in Ward 3 at 1057 South Wadsworth Boulevard. Don't go to the new one, because we won't be there. 4:30 to 6:30 tomorrow, Tuesday, the 9th. Counselor Cruz and I look forward to seeing you there. Also, there is a Vision Zero survey that Lakewood and Jeffco are jointly administering that closes on December 19th. Fill that out if you haven't yet, if you have thoughts on traffic calming, traffic safety, safe streets for all, you can just Google the, the Safe Streets for All, Vision Zero, Jeffco, Lakewood, it'll pop right up. There's a page where you can fill out the survey. You can also register for a stakeholder meeting that's happening this Thursday on December 11th, 5:30 to 7:00. It's also linked in the Friday Report for anyone that gets that. We hope to see you there tomorrow.
Awesome. The only thing I will add with the holiday season here is to shop local. Again, if you go to the city's website, you will go to Economic Development, and you'll find a lovely map that they put together of all the wonderful shops we have here in Lakewood. You can also find an amazing social media campaign for economic development, as well as the city's social media page, that just provides some nice gems here in Lakewood.
Ward 2.
Thank you so much for sharing that. In that vein, the Lakewood West Colfax Business Improvement District and the West Colfax Community Association are running Passport West Colfax right now, which is an opportunity to shop local, and you can find more information about that at westcolfax.org. Our Ward 2 meeting is tomorrow night at the Three Leeches Theater from 5:30 to 6:30, and that's all I have to share.
Thanks. The only thing to add was bring a food donation if you're interested to our Ward meeting tomorrow. See you then.
Ward 1.
We have no Ward meeting in December. We have planned out for next year, January, we will have it the second Saturday, on the 10th. February, the church had some scheduling conflicts, and so Counselor Sherazai and I have decided in February, we will have office hours. I don't know, happy hour sounds more fun, but, but office hours, we'll do that. So thank you and happy holidays.
Yes, thank you. So it is our last official business meeting of the year, and I wanted to take this time to just reflect on all the things we've accomplished this year. So let me start at the beginning. I'm just kidding. I don't, I don't have a report, but I do want to just wish everyone happy holidays and a safe and happy New Year.
All right, well, on that same note, I, we, it has been a big year, has been a very big year. I will not do a grocery list of all the things that we've done. However, I do want to give a big, huge thank you to all of our residents out here that have worked with us, to engage with us, and help, you know, ask questions, support, or challenge the things that we're talking about, because at the end of the day, that is what helps us do policy better. So thank you to everybody that is engaged with this process this year, and most especially to the young people that are realizing that this is an avenue that they, too, can participate in. So that's been really exciting to watch. Also with that, thank you to staff. Like, we've done an amazing amount this year, and it is not because of us up here getting all of that done. You guys are the feet on the ground, the boots on the ground, and thank you so much for everything that you've done to get us through. We are now moving into 2026 and doing lots of planning, so I look forward to, with the reprieve of regular business meetings for the next couple of weeks, few weeks, really starting to hit the ground running on getting planning done for 2026. So excited to be working on committee assignments for everybody, getting retreat figured out a little bit more, and I believe we do have a State of the City address coming up soon. So we're very excited about having that this year, or next year. So anyway, thank you, everybody, for a great finish to the year. We will, of course, be back for a study session next year, but while this is our last minute in front of everyone, I wanted to say thank you and to be safe as we move into the holiday season. And I would encourage everyone, just to look around you, this has been a really hard year for a lot of people, and try to find somebody, maybe, that needs a little something and do a little something. So with that, I will send you off. Happy holidays to everybody. We will be back for our next regular business meeting on Monday, January 12th. And no further business, so join us at 11:14 PM.